2022 at 5:03. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. One or more trustee may participate in this meeting via video conference call. A quorum of the Board of Trustees will be physically present at the Administration Building. First on our agenda is the swearing in of our school board trustee and presiding over that swearing is Honorable Judge Kurnut. Judge Kurnut, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, John, when Lisa called and asked if I would come do this, I thought, what a blessing. I agree with you that you have willingly stepped up and Mary, you've loaned them back to them. So, thank you. Thank you. I can't think of anybody better. Yeah, you guys are blessed. I know you know that. For those of you that may not have worked with them, you're about to experience a wonderful servant leader. So, I'm excited you're back through May 2023. So, you ready to get sworn in?
I am.
Okay. All right. If you would raise your right hand and then repeat after me. I, John Hibbs.
I, John Hibbs.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of trustee place six.
Of trustee place six.
Arlington Independent School District.
Arlington Independent School District.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And I will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And of this city, so help me God.
And of this city, so help me God.
Congratulations, you're back. Want to talk to him?
Yeah. Thank you.
You'd rather we talk up there than here.
Speech, speech.
Whatever you want to do, John, we're just so grateful that you have agreed to come back and step in and help us and we appreciate you. We will try to be gentle on you, Mary. We're going to try to be as gentle as we can, but thank you, John, really, from all of us for agreeing to step in and fill that spot and we appreciate you so much.
As I step into my seat, I will just say this. I appreciate it. I take it with a great deal of humility and a great form of respect from each one of you as I share the same respect to you. One thing that should be noted, you know, when I left here three years ago, there was no even fathoming what this board would have to go through. How you navigated uncharted waters is more than commendable. It is also a great testament for your courage, your compassion, and your desire to serve the children of the Arlington School District. And for that to be able to sit down and serve with each one of you is going to be a great thing and I hope you understand that I'll bring the same desire, commitment that I hope and I know that each one of you have. So, it won't be filling the seat, but trying to work very well with you and find a degree Trying to think of the best word to find consensus because each one of us are people of great passion and mindset. Sometimes to be able to get to the ultimate goal and to achieve the ultimate goal is that one side gives, the other side gives for the betterment of all of Arlington and that's what I hope that we can do. So, with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Judge Kurnut, we want to thank you so much for being here today and swearing in our appointed trustee, John Hibbs. You're always available to us and we appreciate that so much and I think working together, we're going to do a lot of good for the kids in AISD. So, thank you, Judge Kurnut, for being here.
Can you see it?
The Board of Trustees on June 21st, 2022, beginning at 5:09, will convene in closed session pursuant to sections 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act for the topic set forth on our agenda. We will reconvene in open meeting at approximately 6:30 PM. Time, I will reconvene into open session this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for June 21st, 2022, beginning at 6:47. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Our board meetings are open to the public and we welcome everyone and thank you for participating in public education. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting and we have business to conduct. Disruptions will not be permitted. Anyone who disrupts the meeting or speaks when others are speaking may be asked to leave or be escorted out by the security attending this meeting. We welcome civic input and we insist that we remain respectful and civil. Thank you for your cooperation. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Mr. John Hibbs in leading us in the pledge of allegiance to the United States flag and to the Texas flag.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Please be seated. Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you and if you would please now join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. I want to thank Ms. Emma Kate DeKine for sending the board a letter asking that we start doing the pledge to the Texas flag. Ms. DeKine is entering the fourth grade at Duff Elementary and we certainly appreciated her letter to us and we thought it was a great idea, so we will now follow Ms. Emma Kate DeKine's recommendation for the pledging of the Texas state flag. One of the items that preceded this portion of the meeting was a swearing in of our appointed trustee, Mr. John Hibbs. We want to welcome Mr. Hibbs. We appreciate you agreeing to step back in and we thank you so much for being a part of the AISD Board. Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. The first item on our agenda is a presentation. Dr. Cavazos.
Thank you, President Fowler, and this evening we have, as is part of their charge, a report from the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee to the Board. Ahead of time, we have thanked this committee for their work before they even started and they've gotten a lot of thank yous because they have been diligent and at some point the thank yous are all they get. And so, at this time, I'll invite Kelly to start us off, Mr. Horn, with this item and then lead us through this report. Thank you.
Certainly. President Fowler, members of the Board, Dr. Cavazos, thank you and this is an exciting culmination of a year-long worth of meetings that we've had relative to oversight for the bond. And so, this time last year, you appointed a committee of 11 and we had one alternate and we had a number of SLAB students that participated and board members who participated. And so, I'm not going to steal the thunder, I'm going to let Charles share with you some, but I would like to introduce, this is, I would like to say first, this has been the best, by far, the best CBOC group that I've worked with so far as attendance and participation and so forth. We've had great committees previously, but some of our, David, you were on the committee and you can tell us that at times it's challenging to get people to show up, right? And so, but this year, the mix of people we've had has just been amazing. We've had such great attendance and attendance, great attendance from the SLAB members as well, but Charles has done a phenomenal job and so I'm going to use Charles Finnicum and he's going to come up and present for us and the findings that they have so far for this year. So, Charles, why don't you come on up?
Good evening, President Fowler, trustees, Dr. Cavazos, welcome back, Mr. Hibbs. My name is Charles Finnicum. I am the chairman of the 2019 Citizens Bond Oversight Committee and we are proud to, as a committee, present to you the first annual report of the bond committee. Do I get the clicker? Okay. The agenda tonight, we're going to go over the purpose of our committee, the composition of our committee, what our schedule was, our 12 charges. We have about 20 recommendations and of course, then we're going to have some special thanks to those who contributed to our committee. So, the purpose, the what we do and why we do it. What we do is the bond oversight committee is here to provide transparency and to establish public confidence in the use of the proceeds for the sale of the bond that was voted on and authorized on November 5th, 2019. The purpose is to provide findings and to give recommendations to you as the Board of Trustees relating to the expenditures, the progress, and how to maximize the potential of the 2019 bond program. So, we have 20 core people in our committee. 12 citizens that were appointed by you and then eight SLAB members and I don't think we have any, oh, we do. Darla Peznal, who is one of our committee people, Darla, would you stand up and be recognized? Thank you, Darla. And then the eight Student Leadership Advisory Board members. And I will say, these guys, we were really, really impressed with how much they did contribute. They asked questions, they participated, and they really did contribute. So, our meeting schedule, we have met five times, once virtually and four times in person. We did meet virtually in May and then again, we had a first quarterly meeting at the newly remodeled Food and Nutrition Center. Then we met at Crow Leadership Academy. Then in January, we met here to tour the new building. And then lastly, we met at Gunn Jr. High and Fine Arts Dual Language Academy to go over the presentation of our report. So, I'm going to say one thing right now if I don't say it later. We want to thank the principals at Crow Leadership Academy and at Gunn Jr. High for their hospitality, the tours they gave us, and the input that they gave us. And also, David Lewis, Food Service, for the wonderful meal we had and touring his facility. It was super, super hot. We toured the new freezer and David made it snow for us. Correct? So, so, let's go over our charges in order. Our first charge is to review the 2019 Capital Needs Steering Committee report. Our observations were that the AISD staff did convey the bond scope with full transparency and staff identified that projects are consistent with the district's long-range master plan. Our recommendation is to sustain the staff methodology for the orientation and onboarding of future CBOC members. Our second charge was to review the process used to solicit, qualify, and select the contractors to do the work. Kelly, one more time, what was the lady's name that came and gave us the master's course on seven steps of the bidding process?
Ms. Tammy Craig.
Ms. Tammy Craig. Is she here? Yes. I'm here to tell you, we know more about the seven processes of the bond bidding. It was a master's class and, you know, we meet at 5:00, we tour, we have a little dinner and then we sit down for the meeting and she just gave a wonderful, you could see the eyes just glaze over, but, but we did learn and the two most common bidding processes that AISD uses, the CMAR and CSP methods were totally explained. Architect consultant contractor performance evaluations were explained. The method of procurement based on best value was explained and our recommendation is to continue to maximize the best value through the competitive bid process. And two things that we'd like to see, and this was a big topic of conversation, was we know that the RFQ process and sometime the results are on the district website, we'd really like to see the RFQ process and the results put on the bond website. So, there's just a little more transparency. So, our third charge was to review the reports of the current status and planned implementation of the bond program. Each and every director that is touching this bond program gave the committee a full report and explained exactly where they were and how they are doing what they are doing. Whether it was construction, fine arts, transportation, safety, security, and technology, they were all super transparent. One of the other observations we all know, because we are living it right now, is that inflation and rising costs of construction and manufactured products is creating some funding challenges for the district to meet the original expectations of the intent of the bond program, what we told the voters we were going to do. So, our recommendations are to analyze and prioritize the most critical program needs and to consider accelerating and procuring equipment if we can at this point in time. So, we'll talk about this in another slide, but I want to bring it up because one of the things that we were, that we talked about, the playground equipment, you know, that's one of our kind of flagship things that the bond set and people are super excited about it. In discussing and Kelly telling us and bringing us up to date at our meeting, he shared how he was able to purchase playground equipment for future use from the current vendor at today's prices, have the vendor store it at their cost, and then turn out when they'll come out and install later when it's time, when it's in their phase. So, that's using today's money for tomorrow's equipment, which is something we want to see more of. So, our fourth charge is to review the bond program reports to track budgets. Our observation is, as of right now, it appears the bond program is tracking well for completion. And we were fortunate, the district was fortunate to capitalize on labor during the 2020 and 2021 market during the pandemic, so they were able to get competitive prices early on. So, our recommendation is to sustain those efforts if possible. Our fifth charge was to review hub utilization on facilities projects. So, for those who, behind me, that don't know what hub is, it's historically underutilized businesses. Our observation and something that's really kind of neat to see is our hub participation on the bond as of this month is at 32%, which is phenomenal. It's really phenomenal when you realize that at the end of the 2014 bond, it was at 21% and they started at 17%. So, we've almost doubled hub participation and that is something that really needs to be celebrated. Another observation is that AISD does consider the past hub vendors' performance in awarding new projects and that AISD continues to participate in the minority contractor symposiums and that we also host two symposiums a year here on site. So, our recommendation is to sustain the efforts to increase hub utilization and to sustain the efforts to promote hub participation through the marketing events. Our sixth charge was to review internal and external audits. Our observation is that the audit scope identified and overseen by the district's chief internal auditor does show construction contracts and billing accuracy. Internal controls help to identify those projects that need a third-party audit. Gunn Jr. High, which is a CMAR project, will automatically be audited by a third party and those audits show project accounting is accurate and in line with the expected spending patterns. External audits, of course, will increase as more projects go into construction. And again, all CMAR projects will be audited. There will be random audits on the CSP projects. Our recommendation is to sustain those efforts to conduct the random audits when appropriate. So, our seventh charge was to review and provide input on communications to the public. Ryan Lewis and Ms. Anita Foster's team. Is he in your team? Yes. Ryan Pierce, I'm sorry. Ryan has been phenomenal at taking pictures and at posting and at leveraging social media. When we go to groundbreaking or we go to tour, within 24 hours, it's on the website and people are commenting on it. So, and there's Poppy. Poppy Moore is one of our other committee people. Our recommendations are to sustain the website presence and consider adding links for more information and transparency and to continue to leverage social media platforms for communications. Our eighth charge is with the coordination of Dr. Cavazos or his designee, is to assess the degree of satisfaction of the key stakeholders with the quality of the work and the impact of the bond program projects. We do that by the onsite visits and we spoke to the staff and faculty at the Food Service Center at Crow, at Gunn, and we were able to talk to people here at the new building. We received positive feedback from everybody. What I remember from our first visit was at the Food and Nutrition Center was they redid the parking lot and in talking to staff, they were so excited that the parking lot was dry and it was level and it wasn't mud. And so, when it rained, they didn't have to trek through mud to get into work. And so, that is what a small thing, just paving a parking lot, but what an impact it made on the people there. So, our recommendation is to consider adding virtual tours of ongoing and completed bond projects and to continue to increase the bond presence on social media. Our ninth charge with the coordination of Dr. Cavazos or his designee is to, in a non-disruptive manner, conduct onsite campus visits. Again, we did make the four visits and we received positive feedback. Our recommendation is to continue to visit on-campus locations. Number 10 is to agree by majority vote of 20 people with 20 different ideas of our findings and recommendations to be presented here tonight to you as a board. So, we did agree by majority. When our CBO members could not be present, like with Ms. Mays, we were able to do virtual attendance. And again, we had significant participation by our Student Leadership Advisory Board members. They asked great questions, they gave great input, and it was informative and helpful. So, our recommendation is to continue to encourage attendance and participation by the SLAB students. Our 11th charge is to report to you, the Board, annually. Tonight, we are doing that or if necessary, more. Our observation is that annual briefing right now is appropriate and our recommendation is to continue the annual reporting and to sustain the board member presence at the CBOC meetings to facilitate informal updates and communication. And before I move on, President Fowler and Secretary McMura, former board member Bowie Hogg, sometimes Mr. Willbanks was there virtually. It was great to have that input because the committee were able to go directly to the source and have questions answered without us having to go back and forth with information. So, that's really something I think is important and the committee members thought was a vital thing to have. So, our last charge is to coordinate with Dr. Cavazos or his designee to maintain a presence on the AISD website with a link on the AISD homepage for the 2019 bond. So, we have gone over that and our observation was that the website presence and the dashboard for the 2019 bond has continued to improve. The bond progress materials and the reports are very easily accessible and we want to continue to leverage the audiovisual information efforts and our recommendations are to sustain the website presence and to leverage the social media to enhance push-to-viewer opportunities. So, again, with the virtual tours and things like that, so that the citizens can see exactly what's going on. So, let's go to our summary of our recommendations. Again, we'd like to sustain staff methodology for the orientation and onboarding of future members. Continue to maximize the best value through the competitive bid process. Consider including RFQ processes and results on the bond website. Analyze and prioritize the most critical program needs for the bond. Consider accelerating and procuring equipment. Sustain the efforts to monitor, track, and report the costs. Sustain the efforts to require increased hub participation. Sustain the efforts to promote hub participation. Sustain the efforts to conduct random audits. Sustain our website presence and consider adding links to more information for transparency. Continue to leverage social media platforms, potentially adding virtual tours and ongoing and completed projects. Again, increase bond presence on social media. Continue to have the onsite visits with the committee. Continue to encourage attendance by the SLAB students. Continue our annual reporting to you. Sustain your presence at our meetings. And again, sustain the efforts to develop the website presence and to enhance the push-to-viewer opportunities. It's kind of dry, I know, but those are our recommendations. So, let's move over to bond program expected outcomes. So, the bond started, the expected outcomes actually started in 2020 and some of those are expanded programming, educational adequacy, the efficient utilization of facilities, facility condition improvements, and then safety and security improvements. And I want to say, these are not in a list of priorities, they're alphabetized. So, some of the outcomes, one may be more important to somebody else, but that's how it was listed. So, when we talk about expanding programming, we're talking about full-day pre-K with the STEM learning incorporated into the curriculum. We're talking about the Fine Arts and Dual Language Academies at Gunn and the future academy at Arlington High School. Expansion of classrooms at the Diaper CTC to increase the offering or having increased career and technical offerings, pardon me, to satisfy student demand. Next, we will talk about educational adequacy and in that, we're talking about the accessible school playgrounds, the new playground equipment, two of those at each school, ADA accessible equipment with solar canopies, the shade covers, kindness benches, fine arts facility upgrades, not just the two Fine Arts Academies, but we're talking about improvements at each secondary school, stage, sound, lighting improvements at the junior high and high school level, increased and improved athletic facilities for our girls, competition softball fields at the comprehensive high schools, additions and renovations of the, well, of the two stadiums and the new stadium at Martin High School, lifecycle replacements for the turf and track surfaces, and then a really big thing, because I remember going to junior high football games, restaurants, I mean restrooms and concessions and storage buildings and stuff, so where you don't have to trek back to your car to get something. So, that's going to be a wonderful thing at each of our junior high schools. So, we talk about efficient utilization of facilities. This is really going to center around the East Arlington project. The consolidation and replacement of older facilities will have increased efficiency and utilization, decrease operational costs because we'll have newer, better, finer, more efficient equipment, updated state-of-the-art educational facilities for the students, especially the replacement of the three elementary schools and the one junior high school at Carter, replacement of security transportation, improved operational efficiency there, updated security systems, improved training and restroom facilities at those buildings. And something that's really, really cool is we started out with 176 temporary buildings. 99 are gone. I wanted one more to be gone to make this report. So, we're left with 77 temporary buildings in district inventory and as the new elementary schools, the new junior high school come online, we're going to see a lot of those go away. So, that's a wonderful thing to have. Facility condition improvements, the expectations are lifecycle and condition deficiency improvements on all the campuses, except for those, of course, who are part of the 2014 and this 2019 bond. We're talking mechanical, electrical, plumbing upgrades, flooring, ceiling, lighting upgrades, roof replacements, restroom upgrades, ADA improvements, gymnasium improvements, and paving and landscaping improvements. And lastly, safety and security improvements. And lastly, safety and security improvements, continuing to upgrade additional keyless entry points on all of our campuses, additional IP-based cameras that have higher resolution and quality, continue upgrading the district vehicle fleet, and we'll have GPS tracking on those vehicles, additional interior and exterior cameras on the buses for safety, enhanced communication for our stakeholders, our new district-wide fiber network that we broke ground on this year, upgraded PA systems on campuses, upgraded burglar and fire alarm systems, and digital signage at each campus. Now, some of those things aren't pretty, they're not flashy, they're really not always seen, but so some of the most important things that are part of this bond. And lastly, we're here for special thanks, and we'd like to especially thank you, our Board of Trustees. Your names are up there. Mr. Hibbs, I couldn't pencil you in, but no, you're there, no, you're there. Of course, Dr. Cavazos, Darla Moss, our new CFO, who came to the district. I have a lot of respect for her, so they come to Arlington AISD and say, hey, the first thing I want to do is pass a $966 million bond. Let's go to work. That's fantastic. Dr. Hill, Kelly Horn, of course, Carla Martin in Financial Services, Eric Upchurch in Technology, Corey Robinson in Facilities, Eric Coach White, our Athletic Director, Mike Parkos, Dr. Anderson in Fine Arts, David Lewis in Nutrition, David Stevens in Security, and of course, Mr. Tim Collins in Transportation. So I will take any questions if you have any.
Do any of the board members have comments or questions?
Ms. Keisha?
And I failed to mention that Mrs. Mays will be joining us virtually this evening. So Ms. Mays?
Thank you very much, President Fowler. Charles, thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you for leading a group of individuals that were willing to help serve, help provide recommendations, help use their time, help study materials, to come and give these recommendations to the board. Just thank you so much for your service. Many of us have served on this board in the past, and we do understand that it does take time, but the information, the recommendations that we get that are coming from the community, from our staff, is so vitally important as we continue to move forward with these things, particularly our bond issues that the community entrusted in. So I just wanted to give a personal thank you from a distance.
Thank you, you're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Hibbs?
Haven't done this one yet. New technology. I was a dinosaur from the past. We appreciate what the bond has added. I would echo, just coming back on, I have been able to observe the work of the CBOC and the dedication of your team. You pointed, first of all, you pointed out Mr. Hogg that does need to be in that list of thanks, because he worked so diligently along with this. But when you went to your summary of points, one of the things, when I was reviewing this, is basically your points 11 through 20, I'm not going to ask you to review those any more than what it really talks about is reaching out to the community, reaching out to the stakeholders, and having engagement. One of the things, stepping away for a period of time that I saw, because I saw this in a different light, you know, each one of you are up here over week in, week out, living it, and you get to see the true ramifications of all the work that's being done, and the oversight that this committee gives is so vitally important. But your points, what I would like to see us to really center in on, as it deals with engagement with the community, as it deals with, whether it be a web presence, individual meetings with city leaders, with the chamber leaders, with realtors that are so vitally important, and then those that have human health and service aspects, that we as a district engage very closely to allow the community to actually see what the outcomes of this bond is coming to fruition. Too many times, we go forward to the community and say, support us in this bond, but then they don't see the actual, the results, because most average citizens are not on a campus.
Right.
So I think those recommendations that you have, 11 through 20, are spot-on, that it is necessary that we look, reach out, have that engagement. And the importance of your committee, many people look like, look at the ones sitting behind here are the ones that are pushing so much, but actually, it's your interface with this board and showing a perspective of the, okay, the citizen out there, we buy off on. That's the whole importance of this oversight committee. Having your committee as ambassadors go a long way. So even, so I would share with you, as we go to the community in these aspects, to be able to have you and others that have served or will continue to be serving, would be very vital. But at the end of the day, thank you.
Thank you.
And we appreciate it.
So one thing, we did talk about that, Mr. Hibbs, and one of the discussions was, you know, we're sharing on our personal social media accounts, the things that the district publishes, and of course, we don't want to go and talk to the groups without presenting to you all first. But one of the things I think would be kind of cool, I know that with the PTA Council, they're badged with their name, and so when they go on campuses, they can have the recognition of what they're there for. It'd be kind of cool to have the 2019 bond with the logo for the committee members, so when they go out or go on campus or go to groundbreakings, that they are instantly recognizable as CBOC members.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Fowler. And Mr. Finnicum, let me just echo the thanks and the kudos. I know how important this bond is, and I think Mr. Hibbs eloquently stated kind of the, one of the biggest benefits is having you guys as ambassadors into the community to spread the word about all the great things that are happening in AISD because of this bond, and things like expanded pre-K offerings, and just what we're doing in East Arlington in terms of transforming that, but also learning fun things like what a competitive sealed bid is versus...
There's seven of them, yes.
CMAR. So yeah, let me put you on the spot, Kelly. This is going to test how well you did. Which one's better, CMAR or CSP?
Well, actually, CMAR really puts more onto the contract than it does onto the district, and CSP... So you're doing...
Y'all are doing good. I don't think I could remember what it was, you know, and here you are.
I think it's Texas Government Code 2153. I have that in my notes. 2153? 2269, score numbers.
Well, and one of the things I noticed in your, under education adequacy, and I think you pointed it out under the next bullet point, efficiency utilization of facilities. I think a lot of what you pointed out there goes to the heart of why we're doing what we're doing in East Arlington, is educational adequacy. And for those of us who are able to tour the old Thornton, the old Berry, the old Rorick, those were, I can't believe teachers were able to do what they were able to do in those facilities, given the state of the condition of those buildings. And those kids deserve a 21st century learning environment.
Absolutely.
And what we have going on is absolutely going to be phenomenal in terms of transforming that whole East Arlington and bringing them up to par with the rest of the district and then some. So I can't stress enough the importance of educational adequacy, but also the efficiencies that we came with modern facilities that are much more energy efficient and with LED lighting. And, but, at the end of the day, we wanted to move the needle on student outcomes. And having a modern 21st century learning environment where they actually have plugs to plug in the laptops and the iPads and the other technology that kids use on a regular basis now is so critical. And, but, you know, kudos to you guys for being Kelly's favorite.
Well, I understand. I know that you are on the bond and Mr. Chapa also, but...
Yeah, yeah.
I'll leave it there.
No, again, we appreciate all the hard work, and we know it was not easy in the middle of the pandemic, trying to meet and go over these. But Ms. Moss and Mr. Horn and his staff did a phenomenal job, given the challenges. And to hear you guys come back and say, what an awesome experience it is, is good to hear. So kudos to Ms. Moss and Kelly Horn as well for
Agreed.
meeting the challenges and helping us fulfill our goals with having you guys as a committee during challenging times. And I know I had one other question here, but in the essence of time, I'll move on to my other colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Ms. McMura?
Thank you, Mr. Finnicum, and everyone from the CBOC who came, and those that couldn't be here. As a new trustee, I was very fortunate to be one of the few who came to all the CBOC meetings. And, you know, our roles, you touched on it, but our roles when we go as trustees is mainly to hang back. We're not part of the CBOC, but, you know, as you mentioned, it was helpful to you guys sometimes to just have quick access to the answers you needed. But I want you all to know that it was even more helpful, the conversations you all had to us, because not only do we see a lot of what's happening taking flight and its implications on you and your kids and the community outside of, you know, our network, but it also, you know, it reinforced a lot of things, a lot of conversations we have as well. So I know that Kelly Horn is very passionate about every single bond project, and the biggest problem we had in these CBOC meetings was getting everything accomplished in a tight timeline, because there was so much to talk about and show. And I love that we had our meetings onsite at several project, you know, some of them completed, some of them not. And I thought that was great, that that's the best way to learn and check on things. So thank each and every one of you. I know it's a huge time commitment. Quarterly doesn't sound like a lot, but it's a huge commitment, time, energy, learning. So thank you. And shout out to our SLAB students
Absolutely.
in the Student Leadership Advisory Board. They by no means just sat quietly. They were very valuable voices. Some of them have graduated, but I think that we should continue that momentum like you recommended and having their input. So thank you so much for the presentation and for your commitment, Mr. Finnicum.
Thank you, Ms. McMura.
Thank you, President Fowler. Thank you very much for the presentation. Excellent presentation. Well done, well put together. I appreciate you and the committee and the resolve through virtual meetings, pandemic-related items, et cetera. It's really great to witness the, I think, the maturation of this committee process, since we put it in place many, many years ago, and I appreciate your leadership at the helm. Couple of questions that I have for you. And this is all great, and everything's very positive, and it is the purpose of this committee, as has already been said, that it's full transparency. You know, it's for us fact-finding and to kind of be our eyes and ears, if you will. It's transparency to the community to make sure everything's done within scope, on time, on budget, et cetera. And if there is anything that is not in the right direction, that that's the purpose of the committee. So being good ambassadors as well as watchdogs, and I think that you're doing a great job with that, and I encourage that to continue. I was curious, so when you talked about majority votes and 20 people, et cetera, were there any that were super close? Were there certain things that were right on the edge, but it was still a majority? Or any issues at all that we should know?
No, there was nothing that was a split vote on anything. The majority of the committee, in fact, I would say it was almost unanimous in each and every topic we talked about. There was a lot of discussion. When we had our meeting at Gunn, I kind of tried to do it in a town hall style where each and every member was asked, because we, you know, that small group we had, and they were able to provide their input, which is exactly where, you know, John Hopper, or was it John, Jonathan Hooper? Yeah, that made the recommendations, and we all agreed to, on the RFQ process and results. So there was nothing, but nothing that was tight. It was all pretty majority opinion. But consider we had 12 adults and eight students, and they all come in from a different point of view.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that's excellent, and that's a great point, because we try to have these committees set to really represent our community. Our community is very diverse, so having everybody on the committee as well as the student representation is essential. So one thing that I would say, kind of related to that, is the hub utilization, 32%. Wow.
And that's, well, that's district, that's staff, and are we still using the ASIRA? We're not, okay. So that's without the hub, you know, group that we used in the 2014 bond.
Right, right. No, that's fantastic. And I'm thinking that will continue to grow. It's a process that was set up long ago, and trusting that process and watching it happen, 32%, that's great.
Absolutely, it needs to be celebrated.
So the, just a couple other things. Recommendation 10, sustain efforts to conduct random external audits where appropriate. Do you have thoughts or insight as to how that randomization occurs?
So right now, we're in early days, as we're with the projects. Audits are going to increase as the more projects go online. That's something we're going to work with the district with in our liaisons, to see what they're doing, to call the random audits on the different projects that are the CSP projects.
Okay, okay. Well, that sounds good, because that's, I'm always looking for opportunities, again, full transparency for the public, that these are, there is a randomization process in place, that it's not just, oh, well, let's randomly pick this one, because we're not going to turn out great. Okay. And then, yeah, just listening, you detailed everything as far as the overview of the bond, what it's built to provide. It is, it just brings back memories of talking about it from Capital Needs and since then.
Yeah, I recall this day about 10 years ago, this guy I'd never met named Dr. Aaron Reich comes and talks to us, leadership of the Board of Realtors, with spreadsheets for the 2014 bond. So I know how you feel. To see this now.
Mr. Spreadsheet. Yes, I have never, ever been called that.
And he had plenty of...
I've been called, thanks, President Fowler. So with this situation that we are in as a nation right now, current market conditions, inflation, I know things with supply chain and all that has been a constant thing. Did you guys discuss current market conditions related to our bond total scope?
Yes, we absolutely did. And bringing that up, I know that they just published that Web Elementary is going to not hit schedule because of global supply chain issues. We know that's going to happen more and more. And in working with staff, then what's going to happen is they're going to have to, we're going to have to take the, what we said we can do to make sure that we're doing those items, and the things like potentially upgraded lighting, or a tennis court, or something that is not really a core part of the project, but was just an add-on or an extra we'd like to do, some, those may have... to do. Something, those may have to be cut, um, or scaled back so that we can hit the target.
Yeah, it's a, a difficult conversation, one that we, uh, as a group, as individuals, never thought we'd be faced with what we are currently.
Right.
So I, I appreciate that because that is, uh, not necessarily, I mean, it's something, I think it's on all of our minds individually and collectively, but I don't think that that was anything that has been, uh, provided to you as a committee as, you know, moving forward. So that, I mean, to just, that, that right there is a testimony to the committee process working because you, you're actively, uh, having those thoughts and discussions.
And that's great. That's great. So, uh, that's all I have. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. Very good points made. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Fowler. And I did have one very important question. Uh, that was a little more serious in nature than the lighthearted comments I was making earlier. If you could go to slide five or, uh, point, but not slide five. It was in your five areas of expected outcome.
Right, or expecting outcomes?
Yeah, go to safety and security.
Yes.
Improvements. So in light of, uh, the unfortunate events in Uvalde, uh, did you guys, I know previous to Uvalde, unfortunately, we had the Santa Fe incident. Did you discuss school?
We did.
Safety and, and hardening efforts?
We did have those conversations. Uh, Uvalde unfortunately happened after our last meeting, so, uh, that wasn't something that was raw and fresh in the committee members' minds. Um, we have heard from Director Stevens on the increased cameras, uh, increased, uh, keyless entry points, the vestibule entry points at all the elementary schools, the hardening, I hate to use that word, but the hardening of those doors to keep people that aren't supposed to be there out and to secure those. So we've had those conversations. What this item, this bullet point number five talks about the, the continued upgrade of those, uh, uh, upgrade on the cameras, some of the cameras that were purchased in the 2014 because of technology are not compatible with the program where the cameras were buying in 2019. So they're going to have to upgrade some of that. So we did have the conversation about security at the schools. It's one of the reasons why we're so happy to see that the T buildings gone because those students are out there unprotected in the weather, you know, things like that. So with the reduction of those on campuses just helps to bolster security also.
Okay. Uh, nothing in terms of anything additional needed for hardening in terms of, you know, our existing locking mechanisms or, or.
So when we discussed it with Director Stevens, you know, the, the campuses are, are down to the self-locking doors. So, uh, the, when somebody goes out that door, locks behind them with the vestibules in all the elementary schools, that's secure. Um, so we had that discussion and it's, uh, it constantly improving and our district security staff are constantly improving what they're doing. And with the equipment and the technology, um, increases and advances we're doing will help with that.
Well, I know you're a dad with, of children in the district. Let me ask you this and put you on the spot. Did, being on this committee and seeing what we're doing in this bond package and in prior bond package, do you feel your students?
Yes, I feel very secure. Uh, now, my son graduated in 2020 and he was at Arlington High. Um, I was, I'm not going to say it was easy to get in that school. They had a very controlled, uh, point. When my daughter was at Bailey, it was a very controlled point. Um, my daughter is at Martin now. There's one way to get in. Uh, there's a, a district security person right there when I walk in the door and he wants to know where I'm going. So yeah, I do very, feel very secure.
Thank you. Thank you for your honesty.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Any other trustees with comments or questions? Ms. Mays, anything else?
Command?
Thank you, Ms. Mays. Mr. Finnicum, that was so good.
Thank you.
You called it dry. It was not dry. It was very well put together. It was very interesting. Thank you so much. And, and Mr. Horn, thank you. You're always there to answer questions and add insight. Thank you so much. Thank you to Darla and thank you to Poppy for being here to support Charles Finnicum.
And we have another committee person just walked in. Stand up and introduce yourself.
Hello, I'm Kiermau Ross.
Thank you, Kiermau, for being here. Thank you so much. Um, so I just want to thank all the members of the CBOC for their outstanding work. Um, Ms. Murrow and I were, were there on the committee and loved hearing everyone's comments. Uh, the committee was very pulled together. They, they trusted each other. They commented and I thought that was very, very, very helpful. And I just want to say thank you for your time because I know it took a lot of time throughout this year and your time in putting in this presentation. And you all did a lot of tireless work. You never asked for any thanks. You just got in there and dug and did the work and we appreciate you so much.
And on behalf of my committee, I say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Finnicum. Next, we will consider administrative ratifications and appointments. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler. I'd like to recommend the board ratify the appointments of the individuals discussed in closed session for principal for Bowles Junior High, principal for Short Elementary, principal for Wimbish World Language Academy, and assistant principal for Arlington High School.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Fowler. Thank you, President Fowler. I move that we approve the ratification of the individuals discussed in closed session.
My second.
I have a motion by Mr. Chapa and a second by Mr. Will Banks. Since Mrs. Mays is virtual, can, we'll vote by show of hands. Mrs. Mays?
Keisha Mays, I vote yes.
Dr. Reich?
Aaron Reich, I vote yes.
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Sarah McMorrow, I vote yes.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
John Hibbs, I vote yes.
Seeing that it all are in favor, the motion passes.
Thank you, President Fowler. And, uh, to introduce, uh, our new principal for Bowles Junior High is Cody Van Duzee. Uh, Cody attended and you'll see some of her bio there. Uh, UNT in Denton for Bachelor of Science and Lamar University for Master of Education. Uh, she's also most recently was the principal at Piercy STEM Academy, uh, has served as Piercy, uh, for a number of years and, um, and also has been at Webb Elementary in Wimbish. Uh, so congratulations to Cody Van Duzee. Next is our, uh, principal for Short is, uh, Betsy Birkenbile and Betsy attended CCU for Bachelor of Fine Arts and you see her description up there. Um, and most recently was the academic dean at Webb Elementary, um, and also has been a master teacher, um, and a fourth grade dual language teacher and a kindergarten dual language teacher, uh, in, in her, uh, past. So congratulations to Betsy. Next is Chelsea Castiniak and she's the principal, Dr. Chelsea Castiniak, principal at Wimbish World Language Academy. She attended Texas A&amp;M University. Okay. Well, there's one. Keisha, she's muted, but we heard you, Keisha. So, um, also SMU for Master of Ed and Dallas Baptist for Doctorate. Most recently was the interim principal at Wimbish World Language Academy and has served as the dean of instruction at Sam Houston High School, um, and a literacy strategist and a campus instructional GT coordinator and an English teacher in her past. And finally, last but not least, Ryan Hawkins is the assistant principal for Arlington High School and Ryan attended, uh, Emporia State University for Bachelor of Fine Arts. Uh, you see his, uh, resume there. Most recently was an instructional coach at Workman, um, sorry, she attended Emporia University. Most recently she was an instructional coach at Workman Junior High, an English Language Arts teacher at Workman and has also taught English Language Arts in Dallas. Congratulations to Ryan. That concludes our appointments.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. It is now time for our public hearing. Next, we'll open our public hearing on the 2022-2023 budget and proposed tax rate. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding the 2022-2023 budget and proposed tax rate?
Yes, President Fowler, Mr. Richard Weber is registered to speak on this subject.
Thank you, Ms. Benjamin. When I call your name, please step to the podium. You will have two minutes to speak. Trustees will not reply to the speakers. Mr. Weber?
Hello, Richard Weber, Arlington, Texas. AISD already has the highest MNO tax rate in the county. The year before that, it was tied for the highest MNO rate in the county. So now on May 19th, the board discussed and decided to give a pay raise and here's some of the quotes. "We've turned from trying to get there to leading the pack." To me, that doesn't sound as being competitive. That sounds like continuing to overpay. "We want to be o- over the top. It's not being competitive." Another quote, "Other districts have made announcements of what they're doing this year and some of the percentages are nuts. It makes 4% look small, but they are trying to play catch-up." And he continued, "But even with those what seem to be huge percentages and movements and incentives, they are behind where we currently are." Again, that's not being competitive. That's forcing yourself on top. If AISD cannot function being competitive or you can only function by being on top, there's something wrong. Let's fix that problem. As a taxpayer, I don't mind you being competitive, but this isn't being competitive. Also at that meeting was discussion of next year at this time is a very strong possibility that we'll be talking about Robin Hood. So not only are we going to be paying high prices, we're going to be paying the state back to help other school districts. You need to stop the overspending and be considerate of the taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Now we come to our open forum for agenda items. Oh, seeing that there are no more speakers, we'll close the public hearing. Now we come to our open forum for agenda items. Nope, nope. Now I'm off. That's it. Is that, okay. As stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding an item on this agenda are required to register at www.aisd.net. Board meeting speakers request no later than 3:00 PM the day of the board meeting. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding agenda items?
Yes, ma'am. We have one registered speaker for the open forum for agenda items.
Thank you, Ms. Benjamin. Mr. Steven Poole? Welcome, Mr. Poole. This is a routine part of the school board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. This segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with the trustees on items that are on the agenda tonight. It is inti- it is not intended to be a discussion or a debate and trustees will not reply to the speaker. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. Personnel matters are not appropriate subjects for open forum. You will have two minutes to speak. Mrs. Benjamin will notify you when your time is up. Mr. Poole?
Uh, thank you, President Fowler, members of the board and Dr. Cavassos. Uh, tonight I'm here to, uh, give you a little comments on the discussion action item on, um, Board Policy DNA Local. That's the teacher evaluation policy. The recommended changes is something that our association has been pushing for, for several years because it gives time back to teachers. And if you ask any teacher on working condition issues, uh, that, that's a concern of them, it's always more time for themselves. Uh, the changes, just changes the formal observation for teachers with three or more years of experience in Arlington. They've already proven themselves. And the evaluation cycle for a formal observation, the pre-observation conference, the formal observation and the post-op, uh, observation conference takes about two and a half hours. That's time back to teachers. But more importantly, multiply that by the number of teachers, uh, administrators have to appraise and it's time back to our administrators to be able to work closely with students and providing an efficient and effective learning environment on their campuses and their classrooms. So this is a ad for teachers. It's an ad for administrators and it's a very good thing to do. Uh, you've heard me say, teachers will leave a district or come to a district for three reasons, benefits, compensation and, um, working environment. Y'all are knocking it out of the park on compensation and teachers deserve every dollar you give them. And you have three-peated with a 4% raise and you are at the top and that is attracting quality people into the district and keeping quality people into the district. But we need to look at every policy and procedure in the district like you are with this policy to see ways to providing time back to teachers so they can accelerate those missed opportunities students have had over the last two years. It's going to be vitally important this year and for future years to continue that kind of practice. So I'll work every day, all day with Dr. Cavassos and his team and you all to find those opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. Next on our agenda are action items and I believe we have seven. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler. And the first one is dealing with the adoption of the 22-23 budget. And Ms. Moss will lead us through a brief presentation. You, this is a continuation of the story and the culmination. So before Ms. Moss begins, I want to thank her and her team, uh, for this budget. And as challenging as it is, and future budgets will be challenging, thank you for your, uh, hard work in putting this together. I also want to thank the department heads, the principals and others, HR, uh, who build this budget with Ms. Moss and her team. Um, it doesn't go unnoticed. This is kind of the last step in the adoption, but it's been a continued story all the way through the spring. So also thank the board for your diligence, uh, finance committee and others for, uh, your review and analysis and getting us to this point. It's an important point. Every year, uh, when we get to bring forth a budget for the board to consider and adopt. So Ms. Moss?
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. President Fowler and trustees, uh, we continue the process as Dr. Cavassos said tonight. Uh, just a glimpse again at our timeline. Uh, we are, um, the board is, um, responsible for adopting a budget by June 30th as we are a July 1, June 30th fiscal district. So we've held that public hearing tonight and we're, uh, here to propose a budget for you to adopt. Um, after which in the next few weeks, we will be, uh, submitting a district survey to the agency, um, after which they will, um, recommend our, or set our maximum compressed tax rate. The, um, budget will, we, we, the last item on the budget for 22-23 is the actual adoption of the tax rate. And we talked through that in the process of what we posted on the notice and why we posted it on the notice and what we anticipate that tax rate actually being, uh, when we actually adopted in, uh, August. So this is a quick look at the general operating fund that we're proposing tonight. The 263.9 million dollar beginning fund balance is projected based on current information, um, to date for the 21-22 current budget. We are proposing $577 million in revenues and other resources and $609.9 million in expenditures. That results in a proposed deficit budget of $32.2 million. Now, we've adopted, uh, deficit budgets in the past. Unfilled positions and underspending by campuses and campuses and departments usually results in that deficit, uh, being reduced. Uh, we're creating a lot of assumptions. This, or this budget is built based on a lot of assumptions. Um, so depending on how they come in as far as attendance and other things, that deficit could be reduced as well. Uh, and we do anticipate some savings based on underspending and payroll savings. Our, um, human resources department is also working on implementing position management and control. Then we'll be able to under, um, to, um, monitor that underspending on a monthly basis and our goal is to share that out with the board. goal is to share that out with the board on a monthly basis when we do our financial updates. Of course, we all know this is a working document. Sorry, I moved my slide. Sorry. We all know that this is a working document, and it's built on assumptions. Again, we're assuming a 5.29% property value, taxable value increase. And earlier in this process, we shared with the board how we projected that amount based on what we, historical data, and what we were, we thought we might be landing on in July for our estimated values. We are also projecting a 98.5% tax collection rate, and that's based on historical data as well. The general operating budget also includes a 4% salary increase for all employees. That's approximately $17 million, or roughly 3% of the total budget. Our finance team, in collaboration with the demographer, the research and accountability department, and our executive director of Human Resources, is projecting student enrollment of 55,603. The budget is built based on that number. The projected attendance rate of 91.5% is significantly lower than previous years, and of course, that's due to the pandemic. We are looking at ending this fiscal year with a, an attendance rate of 90.92%. That is part of why we are projecting that for this next year. That number comes in higher than our revenue increases. So we've been sharing with the board for the current fiscal year how this impacts our ESER funds. And thank you, Mr. Hibbs, for suggesting that I spell that out. ESER is Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief, and those funds provide financial support for school districts to address the ongoing impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. So we continue to monitor the ESER funding on the budget, and you see, we are estimating just over $2.5 million in indirect cost, and we are, we have $7.5 million in expenditures that are applied to ESER III funds. So right sizing the general operating budget is going to result in evaluating our ESER expenditures and moving necessary expenditures from ESER back into the general fund. That's part of the work that we have. So we are proposing a general operating fund, debt service fund, capital projects fund, natural gas fund, and child nutrition fund budget for your consideration tonight. And this is the document that you have in the packet we provided for you, and the board is required to adopt the budget at the functional level, and you'll see that in this document. So our budget priorities listed in this slide has driven our work. We have focused on competitive compensation, student recovery, student intervention, and student academic support. We continue the budget stabilization work while balancing our student and staff needs and supporting the AISD strategic plan. This chart is just an example of how, what we've built into the budget in creating that competitive compensation. And if I may, before I do a recommendation, I want to just acknowledge the team members who have been vital in getting us to this point. It's been a lot of work. We started back in last October in the fall. And so I'll start by thanking the 150-plus budget managers from the campuses and the departments that have worked with our budget department in compiling this together. We've asked them to consider doing things a little differently to make this process more efficient and streamline the process. We continue to have asked of them, and they are, you know, very diligent in helping us to get this work done. Thank you to the Finance Division leadership team. I think they are all here tonight, behind me there. Kelly Horn manages the capital projects budget, which is included in this proposal. He manages a $966 million bond work. David Lewis manages the $32 million child nutrition budget, and he does an outstanding job with that. We have a recent member who's joined the team, Carla Martin, and she has oversight over the entire $1.2 billion combined budget that we are proposing for your adoption tonight. Last but not least, Sheena Jocelyn is our Director of Budget and Finance, and she and her team have been exceptional in doing this work with our campuses and our departments. And if you will, just wave, Sheena. And she has one of her budget member, budget staff members with her as well, Ms. Stephanie. So again, we are very excited about the team we built together. We're excited about the process that we have made in streamlining the budget and giving that information to you and being transparent in what we do along the way. So with that said, administration recommends approval of the 2223 budget, including the general operating fund, debt service fund, capital projects fund, natural gas fund, and child nutrition fund as presented. And I'm glad to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Moss. Do I have any trustees with questions? Ms. McMorrow?
Thank you, President Fowler. Thank you, Ms. Moss and team. This is a big night for you, I'm sure, just as it is for us in our district. I want to, I had a quick, very quick question about the very first slide, actually, the general operating fund proposed budget at a glance, I guess. So last meeting, 91.5% attendance rate, this was what we had estimated last time. That hasn't changed, correct?
That is correct. That has not changed.
And this is kind of painting a very conservative guess, isn't it?
Very conservative, and you're right. We don't have that crystal ball. We wish we had.
Right, right.
But based on where we are right now, that is our best guess on where we may land next year. We are being conservative, and we're hoping that number increases. I think we've asked in the past how much maybe a 1% increase would generate, and I think we shared maybe six or seven million. We've got an updated template. We had an error on one of Omar's revenue templates. We have an updated template. It's looking like $10 million per 1%. So if we actually were to improve our attendance by one percentage point, that would be a third of that deficit that we're presenting tonight. So that's the work we have to do, is get our students to return to school.
And that's mainly why I was asking, and by the way, I do appreciate you airing on that end, as you always do. But I, I think that, you know, everyone had the best thoughts in their head possible, that this year would be back to normal. It absolutely was not. It had tremendous implications on our attendance rate. But I do appreciate you treading cautiously and keeping that number a conservative one. I'm optimistic that it will, it will be higher next year, and that will, you know, give us less of a deficit. But I just wanted to double-check that that was your rationale. Thank you so much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMorrow. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Mays. And on the, I mean, habits, habits. I apologize. I apologize. Thank you, President Fowler. So, Ms. Moss, for those listening at home, just a quick point on the capital projects you show up for. I can't read it here, even with my glasses. $390 million deficit? And that is just timing from when we issued the bonds, and we just have construction, so there's not really a deficit there. That's just timing.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Any other trustees with comments or questions? Ms. Mays?
Thank you, President Fowler. Ms. Moss, just one very simple question. In the presentation that you have, our fund balance is $231,781,183. Just want to confirm that that is still meets and/or above the required amount of money that we are normally anticipating to hold back?
Yes, ma'am. It's well within our policy, but we're also above that policy. We're right now, well, of course, I'm going to go back to fund balance is one point in time. And so the estimate that we're giving you is based on where we ended June 30th, plus what we have in this current budget, or what we're asking, proposing you to adopt tonight. So the difference there, if in the 244 and 231, we're still going to be over four months of operating expenses in our fund balance. So that is a very strong fund balance that we, we still continue to have.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation and your hard work by you and your team.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mays. Dr. Reich?
Thank you, President Fowler. Ms. Moss, I just wanted to say thank you to you, your department, the, everybody that puts their efforts into making this budget. I, I just wanted to thank you personally. This budget process, this cycle, has been challenging, but yet easier, if that's really, I don't know if that's contextually the proper word, but has made it a much more pleasant process going through many years that I've been on this board. We don't necessarily have all the thoughts in, in our minds on which, which way we're going or not this night to approve the budget. A lot of times we do, but a lot of times we don't. And in setting the stage, and I think a lot of that is with giving more periodic updates, financial updates to the board, I, I think there's just a better bandwidth of what's happening regarding the budget, and considerations and assumptions are, have been vetted out earlier in the process. And I, I just want to say thank you for that. I think it's really enabled us to come to consensus sooner and not necessarily make this a formality tonight, but definitely we are very well informed of what we are voting on tonight. So I just wanted to say thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Fowler. The only thing I wanted to point out, which you, which you alluded to when talking to Mr. Will Banks and Ms. McMorrow, is the attendance rate this year. I understand why the projection is in the 91s because we had such a disruptive year with, with, you know, really two waves of COVID, and that's why we've been held harmless in the last few years by the state. But I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, our attendance rate prior to the pandemic was above 94, closer to 95%. So at a, at a, you know, 10 million per 1% clip, if we get closer to where we historically have been, which was really stable, I mean, most of this deficit goes away. You know, we have a substantial fund balance. We have some, if needed, I think, ESER stabilization funds. If we really needed to tap that again, it, it's not unusual for being in the position, for us to be in the position of adopting a, what appears to be a deficit budget that ends up being very close to, to, to zero, or a balanced budget, and, or, or having a small surplus. So I feel very comfortable with the job that you've done. I do appreciate the conservative approach that you've taken, and I, I think that we're in a very fiscally responsible place with adopting this budget. So at this time, I move to adopt the 22, the 2022, 2023 budget, including the general fund, child nutrition fund, debt service fund, capital projects fund, and natural gas fund.
Do I have a second? I have a motion for Mr. Chapa and a second for Mr. Will Banks. Any discussion before we vote? Mr. Hibbs?
I appreciate this, and I want to, I want to share this with the, the board and for the public. I've seen this all for 48 hours. You have worked painstakingly on this for, over three months. My, my fingerprint is not on anything of this budget. I trust the, and have confidence in my peers and colleagues and the administration. I will share with you that because it is this, the budget of this board and my predecessor, Mr. Hogg, that painstakingly went through this, I'm going to respectfully abstain from the vote. Not saying that I'm not supportive of it, I just don't believe that I have any presence in being able to take credit for it, or, you know, and I know that this is a living, breathing document that's going to take place over the course of this next year, where we may be looking at, you know, pulling in the reins. We might be able to go and say, hey, we have unexpected windfalls, and I'll be able then to put in, and I believe that's the more appropriate time for me to take votes. But I will tell you that I will be abstaining from this vote.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs, and I certainly understand your position. All right, if we're ready to vote, so Mrs. Mays is able to participate, we'll do a roll call vote. Mrs. Mays?
Keesha Mays, I vote yes.
Aaron Reich, I vote yes. David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Sarah McMorrow, I vote yes.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
John Hibbs, I abstain.
Everyone votes in the affirmative, and the motion carries. Oh, with one abstention.
Sorry.
It's okay. Mrs. Moss, thank you so very much for you and your team, for your hours and hours and hours of working on this budget. I cannot imagine dealing with numbers all day, every day. English teacher, so I need words, not numbers. So thank you so much for you and your team, for your dedication and the time that you put in for AISD. We appreciate you. We now move to action item A. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler. Action item B will be for the board to consider appointing the individuals to the Citizens' Bond Oversight Committee and appointing it a committee chairperson. Community Engaged Committee has been actively reviewing this, and we bring that for your
Thank, thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Any questions or discussions? Is there a motion? Ms. McMorrow?
If there are no other trustees with, with questions or comments, I'm ready to make a motion. I move to approve the appointments to the Citizens' Bond Oversight Committee and the appointment of the committee, committee chairperson, Mr. Charles Finicum, as proposed to authorize the board community engagement committee to fill future vacant positions as needed.
Thank you, Ms. McMorrow. I have a motion by Ms. McMorrow. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Hibbs, and a second by Mr. Hibbs. To honor Mrs. Mays, let's vote roll call. Mrs. Mays?
Keesha Mays, I vote yes.
Aaron Reich, I vote yes.
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Sarah McMorrow, I vote yes.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
John Hibbs, I vote yes.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes. Voting, everyone votes in the affirmative, the motion carries. We now move to act, action items C through G.
Thank you, President Fowler. And so we bring for your consideration some real property, and it's described in your packet, and you've had an opportunity to review that, real property to consider the authorization of that sale of real property. And so there are a number of, of tracks there that are on the agenda, and we recommend approval of all of them.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Do I have a motion?
I move approval.
Motion by Mr. Will Banks. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. McMorrow. If there's no other discussion, please vote. No. A second by Ms. McMurro. If there's no other discussion, please vote. No? No?
Mays, I vote yes.
Dr. Rice?
Thank you, President Fowler. There's some details that need to be discussed as part of the motion, and I have them here, but I will pass it to the maker of the motion so that he can officially read that into the record. And at that point, if there's discussion or not, we can vote.
Whereas the Board of Trustees of Arlington I S D determines that the following property is no longer necessary for the operation of the school district and desires to sell the property, I move to adopt the formal resolution and authorize the following sale of real property for the sale of 0.4540 acre tract of land out of the J W Berry Survey Abstract Number 165, tract 3E, Tarrant County, Texas, and approximately 11.145 acre tract of land out of the Juan Armentadres Survey Abstract 1766, tract 1A03B, and TR 1A4C, City of Grand Prairie, Tarrant County, Texas, and a 0.0971 acre tract of land out of the Juan Armentadres Survey Abstract 1766, tract 1A04C, City of Grand Prairie, Tarrant County, Texas, and a 0.165 acre tract of land out of the Juan, out of Juan Armentadres Survey Abstract 1766, tract 1A04D, City of Grand Prairie, Tarrant County, Texas, approximately 3.35 acres of land out of the James W. Brannon Survey Abstract 156, tract 1B08, and TR 1B5C, City of Grand Prairie, Tarrant County, Texas, and that the complete resolution be attached to the minutes of this meeting and move adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbanks. Any other discussion? All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Wilbanks and a second by Ms. McMurro. Seeing that there's no other trustees, we'll vote. Mrs. Mays?
Keesha Mays, I vote yes.
Aaron Rice, I vote yes.
David Wilbanks, I vote yes.
Sarah McMurro, I vote yes.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
John Hibbs, I vote yes.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes. The motion carries in the affirmative.
Next on our agenda is discussion action items. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler. And this evening, we bring for discussion action, consideration to the revision of Board Policy D N A Local related to performance appraisals and evaluation of teachers. And this is a policy we bring forward that has been considered by the Governance Committee meeting of the Board, and it does afford an opportunity to really focus in on coaching and supporting our teachers in a way that we know pays dividends and also allowing some removal of the formality of it that we know can be better utilized with our coaching process. So these will somewhat go together as we present this, and then eventually the coaching discussion we'll talk about. But Dr. Brown is going to lead us through this policy revision. Dr. Brown?
Thank you. Good evening, President Fowler, members of the Board, and of course, Dr. Cavassos. Thank you for this opportunity to discuss our recommendation for a T test appraisal policy update. So the purpose of T tests is to provide continuous feedback, of course, to our teachers to not only improve their practice, but of course, to improve student outcomes. Connected to T tests also is the student learning objective. We call it the S L O, and that is connected to T tests, and it basically allows the teacher to have a dialogue with their appraiser, their principal around a student goal they have, and to track progress throughout the course of the school year, just providing a little context to this evaluation system. So beginning in 2016-17, all of our teachers in Arlington I S D were, started to begin being appraised annually. And prior to that, they were on a less than annual cycle. So now about six or seven years, we've been on an annual evaluation cycle. So before we started thinking about if we were going to recommend any kind of adjustment or update, we wanted to make sure that we sought input from our constituents, what their experience has been with T tests. So we got input from teachers, from principals, and also central office leaders, principal supervisors mainly in their role supporting campuses. We wanted to know kind of what, just kind of assess the current state of that, the value of it, what they were getting from that experience, the time that's involved in the formal evaluation process, and then really just kind of look at determining recommendations for the 22-23 school year. We also made sure not only we work with focus groups internally, we also talked to a few other districts to see what some of their practices were as far as their evaluation process as well, if it's annual or less than annual, to just get insight into what some of our peer districts are doing across the metroplex. So right now, as you all know, post-pandemic, we've talked about the recovery and how much work we have to do in accelerating learning. And so we already have so much targeted and intensive work happening with our teachers around data-driven instructional practices, coaching and feedback as well. And so when you add the formal evaluation on top of that, it just kind of, it just complicates or adds to the intensive work that's already happening. So because we're already doing such intensive work in coaching and feedback and data-driven instructional practices, we are recommending implementation of a less than annual appraisal cycle for qualified teachers. So this would not be for all of them. So administrators would still have ample opportunity to continue to help and support teachers in providing feedback and observations and feedback and walkthroughs to our teachers to continue to improve their practice outside of the evaluation cycle. Also, at any point during the, during the less than annual cycle, the teacher or principal can activate the formal T test appraisal process. A couple of reasons why that might happen. Maybe during informal observations, or maybe some deficiencies that have been pointed out in the performance of the teacher that needs more intentional work and support. So we want to see this as a progressive thing. It's not going to be automatically you go back on the evaluation cycle. We want to be able to see that you've coached and supported, provided continuous feedback to grow the teacher, and then if there's an opportunity or a need, we do have that option to put them back in the evaluation cycle. So how do you qualify for a less than annual appraisal? So a few, a few areas here. One is you must be employed in Arlington I S D for a minimum of three years. That ensures that we've had ample opportunity to evaluate you on the formal cycle, to be able to get an idea and know what your instructional acumen is and how well you're able to provide quality teaching and learning in that three years. Of course, you have to have an educator term contract, hold a certificate from S P E C, be assigned to your certification area, all normal things that we do in a school district. And then, of course, engage in an annual review process with the assigned administrator, which I'll talk about in just a moment. For this less than annual, so if you've been in the district for three years or more, you would qualify. At any point, of course, you could be put back on if there are deficiencies noted. And we would kick in the T test appraisal process in year three. So if we start in 22-23, you would not be evaluated in 22-23. You would not be evaluated in 23-24, but in 24-25, in August, we would begin to kick in the T test cycle for those who qualify for the less than annual. We wanted to make sure, and then this came from feedback from teachers also and principals, that we still had an annual review process. And so what would that annual review process look like? We still wanted to make sure that we kept the S L O part portion of our work so that teachers are still creating a solid goal around an instructional practice they wanted to continue to support with their kids. We also wanted to make sure that there was some opportunity for, at the end of the school year, for that teacher to be able to have a conversation informally with their administrator, whoever's assigned, and talk about specific areas of their work throughout the year. And so the team recommended, that's both focus groups, that we focus on dimension four of T tests, so we still have an element of T tests. Dimension 4.1 is just really about professional demeanor and ethics, your decorum, your interactions with your peers, your colleagues, et cetera. So it's a very simple, straightforward one, a very important one, though. 4.2 is goal setting. Already mentioned the importance of the student learning objective. Also, is this teacher incorporating feedback from their administrator in helping improve their practice? 4.3 is around professional development. Not only are you regularly engaging in professional learning, but you may be contributing to your peers or your colleagues in helping them grow in their work as well. And then dimension 4.4 is school community involvement. We know how important it is for our teachers to connect with our parents and families and making sure that's a part of the conversation we have with teachers at the very end of the year. So with that, you have been provided the red line copy of the D N A policy we're asking, we're recommending for an update. And then on the right-hand side of this slide, you also have this, is the regulation portion. So a policy update and the regulation, which would specifically talk about what we are going to engage in in the annual review process. So you have the red line there again, and that just talks about the frequency of how we would, how we would appraise teachers every three years, as I mentioned, and then the components we'd look at in that annual review are on the regulation side. And just to highlight, which we'll talk more about in our coaching conversation with Dr. Wertz, there still would be plenty of opportunity for continuous observation and feedback opportunities. We've been very strategic in our system around making sure that we have solid professional learning practices and P L Cs, our data-driven instruction work, and then just our work in our math and literacy. We feel really confident that we'd still be able to continue to grow teachers and have expectations for high-quality teaching and learning without the formal evaluation cycle for those who qualify. So our literacy and math teachers, which you'll hear more about in just a moment, will still get coaching, a coaching cycle around literacy and math. And then all other teachers will be observed and provided feedback and support just to strengthen teaching and learning, or we could be very focused around a specific area that they, we want them to strengthen, or it could be around our Focus Five, which we'll talk about a little bit later as well. One caveat I did want to bring up is the teacher incentive allotment. And we have not, of course, elected to participate in this yet. We're still in the nascent stages of collecting information and input, but if we do opt to engage in T I A, teachers who do decide to be a part of that will have to go back into the T test annual appraisal process, and that will be the teacher's discretion if they want to be able to do that, if we do get involved in our T, if we do elect to incorporate T I A in our district. So our recommendation is that administration recommends the board approves the revisions to D N A Local as presented, and I'm happy to answer any questions you all have.
Thank you so much, Dr. Brown. Mr. Hibbs?
Thank you for the presentation, Dr. Brown. As always, you do an excellent job in being able to communicate these things. One thing that I thought I was crystal clear on this, but I wanted to ask you to help me out with something, because I'd like to go back to something one of our speakers tonight, Mr. Poole, had said about trying to, that this is going to be very, very helpful, not only for the teachers, but also for the administrators that are having to do the T test evaluations.
Yes, sir.
From what I heard, and you may have just been using this as an example, you said, so individuals, if upon the approval here, 2022, if they meet the qualifications, then they would be evaluated in 2025?
That's correct.
Is there going to be any staggering? Because what I see is I see a huge group of our workforce is beyond three years. So is everybody going to hit in 2025? Are we going, or is there some type of staggering here to be able to institute the program that some will be before 2025, some will be maybe just beyond that date to make it feasible for all these evaluations to be done?
Yes, there'll still be variance, because we'll still have year one and year two teachers in the district who will, who will still be on their T test cadence, even still beginning 22-23. That won't change for them. It's just those that have three years or more, they will get the, they will not be, they'll be on the break, if you will, a break. Now then those who are year one, for example, in 22-23, by the time they hit their three year, then they're going to come off the cycle. So we're going to have some on and some off like we did prior to T tests.
But would I be right in assuming, I'm just trying to get this in my head, am I right in assuming that we have a good portion of our workforce that are already beyond three years? So they will qualify to be enrolled into this program per se? And is, what I'm asking is, come 2025, is that going to give us a huge pool of people that we have to push through? I'm in favor of this, by the way. I'm just making sure that it's workable for both the administrators and the teachers to ensure that we don't have a raining down of so many. So that's why I was asking if we're doing any staggering there, maybe, you know, I, I don't know how that works. You guys are the professionals. I'm just thinking with my little mind.
Yes, it's not a little mind, by the way. It's not a little mind. We have not talked about staggering, trustee Hibbs. We do believe, because our administrators have been able to execute T tests with all of the teachers, that they'll still, they'll have enough of a spread that in variance in year one, two, and three teachers, they should be okay.
That is a very fair answer.
And the other thing I think is, as you mentioned, as you get into year three, then you're on a different cycle. So, and with attrition, those things work themselves out. But the group that is consistent will eventually not have to be evaluated.
Thank you.
Any other trustees with questions or comments? Ms. McMurro?
Thank you, Dr. Brown. And I also want to thank our senior staff, Dr. Cavassos, my colleagues on the Governance Committee for their work on making this happen, and the focus groups, too. I appreciate that you guys facilitate those focus groups, and I think that that's key. We get, you know, especially coming off the heels of COVID, we are constantly, in this climate, being asked and challenged, you know, how can we control the controllables as a district and make sure that we are honoring our teachers, you know, mental health? We are not piling on more and more and more as a district. What can we do as a district that, you know, isn't, isn't taxing of them any, any more than what the pandemic has caused? And to me, you know, being an educator and having been evaluated under T tests, this is one of those actionable items that we are facing and we are, you know, we are addressing. Can we control, you know, T E A Reading Academy? No. Can we lift anything off their plates in regards to House Bill 4545? No. But this is something actionable that I think not only will, you know, let the coaches and teachers do their thing and grow, but also lift that, as you stated, and as I think Mr. Poole stated in his comment, take an extra time burden off of our administrators, because it is very time-consuming. And that formal observation, the way I understood it, it has to be a minimum of 45 minutes just in that one classroom to complete. And I know, you know, my time in classroom, I would be evaluated for that formal observation, and that was very, you know, that was a lot of pressure. And I know a lot of our teachers, veterans included, they feel it, you know, year after year, or they felt it. And, you know, a lot of our administrators would get an emergency call on the walkie-talkie, or they would, you know, have a parent they needed to talk to, you know, urgently. They couldn't always fulfill that 45-minute window of time, even if they had plans to do so. So this is going to be an across-the-board win. T tests is very comprehensive, and I think it's a much better evaluation tool than what we used to do, which was P D O S. It's more student-centered rather than just focusing on teacher behaviors. So that alone was a step in the right direction for our district. But the every-three-year cycle, I think, is wonderful, and I just want to say thank you so much. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. Mr. Wilbanks?
Thank you, President Fowler. And I also want to echo my support in some of the things that Ms. McMurro pointed out. But to me, I think you said it well when you talked about how, you know, we're going to replace what some people thought was a very onerous process with little yield in terms of student outcomes. Maybe you can make that argument with something that we know definitely changes student Maybe you can make that argument with something that we know definitely changes student outcomes, and that's coaching. And so trading one for the other in a more informal, much more collaborative process, I'm all for. I talked to some former administrators, and they dreaded the T-test cycle, because, I mean, there's just too, in a high school, there's too many to get through, and they weren't doing it justice, just to try to get through. And so I think doing the three-year cycle is definitely the way to go. And again, you guys, with the focus groups, you know, you looked at it thoroughly, and I will be supporting this recommendation. I also want to echo what Mr. Hibbs pointed out, and I echo his concern. And if there is some way to take that cohort of people who are automatically eligible for three years and split them into two groups and draw straws to see who gets the two-year test the first go-around before they go on that three-year cadence, I think that might even out if it, if it ends up being, you know, a lump of, in this first three-year test. So, yeah, I would, I would encourage, based on my colleagues' comments, I echo his concerns, and if you could, maybe look at that and see if there is a problem, and then maybe spread it out into two different cohorts. And that would be my recommendation, but yes, this is great stuff. So thank you, Dr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Thank you, Dr. Brown. I, too, am very much in favor of this. Anything that we can take off the plates of teachers and administrators and give them back a little bit of time, I'm in favor of. Thank you so much for this presentation. Do I have a motion? Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Fowler. I move to approve the recommended changes to board policy DNA local.
I have a motion for Mr. Chapa and a second from Dr. Raish. Please vote. Mrs. Mays?
Keisha Mays, I vote yes.
Erin Raish, I vote yes.
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Excuse me, Sarah McMorrow, yes?
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
John Debs, I vote yes.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes. Motion carries.
In the affirmative. We now move, excuse me, to discussion item A. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and we bring, as is now customary, the financial update to this board meeting. And Ms. Moss will lead us through that presentation that also includes information about our consent items. Ms. Moss?
Thank you. Once again, we've kind of established this routine on our financial update. What you see in your board packet this month includes a lot of information on our finances. Our gifts and donations are standard. We have several bids, purchases, and construction items, as well as purchases greater than $50,000. The volume is a result of the time of the year. We do not have a board meeting in July, so we're bringing those so that we can start district business on July the 1st. We're presenting a monthly financial report and an investment report as of April 30th. And that's just due to the timing of our, our, our board meetings. We have an annual report for fees related to the AISD Cooperative Purchasing Program that we're required to bring to the board annually as well, and some salvage property. Tonight, we also have a final budget amendment that goes along with us adopting the budget. It's one of the items in statute that requires the board to amend the budget. So again, we're in fiscal year 2022. Earlier, we talked about fiscal year 2023. And I just want to highlight just the one item here, the final budget amendment. You should have a copy of this document where you are required to amend the budget on the functional level as well. And I'll just go through each one of those. The General Operating Fund, Final Budget Amendment. We are looking at an estimated revenue of $586 million and $2.4 million of other resources. Our estimated expenditures are $580 million for an estimated surplus of $8.7 million. And that is our General Operating Fund. Again, we're estimating based on what expenditures we might have through June the 30th, as well as invoices that will come in in June and July, leading up to our audited financial reports. And again, we continue to share how our ESER impacts the budget. And you'll see there for the 2022 fund, we are looking at a $30.3 million deficit without our ESER funding that has helped us out. Our debt service fund, we're estimating revenue at just over $100 million and other resources of 10.3. Our expenditures are $109 million and 11.6 in other uses. If you'll recall, our bond refunding and the defecence of some of our bonds were resulted in those entries for an estimated deficit of $9.9 million in the debt service. And basically, we're just taking, removing money from the fund balance to cover that $5 million that we put into the bond refunding and the five, over $5 million in defecence of bonds. Our capital projects looks a little different. As we stated earlier, estimated revenue of $757,000, $197 million in other resources, that's our bond sales. Expenditures are estimated at $605 million, leaving an estimated deficit of $408 million. Again, as Mr. Will Banks stated earlier, it's not a true deficit, but it just shows our expenditures for the bottom program. And then our natural gas fund, we're estimating revenue at $1.2 million and expenditures just over $17,000 for an estimated surplus of $1.2 million. Our child nutrition fund, we're estimating revenue at $35.7 million and expenditures of 30.1, resulting in a surplus of $5.5 million for that fund. And I'm glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mrs. Moss. Mr. Will Banks, we, thank you. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Fowler, and thank you, Ms. Moss. On the operating budget, if you could pull up that slide. For those listening at home and in the audience, can you refresh us of what we started out with when we adopted the budget and where we are now? And, as always happens, I assume you anticipate when we get to the final numbers after all the books are closed out, this number will be even greater.
That is correct. And we started out, the board adopted a 12-point, just over $12.9 million deficit budget in June of last year. And so what we're projecting right now is the $8.7 million surplus. We're looking at payroll savings and, again, unspending in some of the budget, budgets that we, we have this year.
Okay, and, but I'm not going to hold you to a number, but, you know, once we get to the end of the summer and we close out the books, you do anticipate that surplus to grow?
We do. And again, we err on the side of safety here as well when we report out. I wouldn't want to report out 15 million and we land at, at eight, or, you know.
Or even zero, yeah. So, no, we appreciate that. But yes, no, thank you.
Ms. Moss, I think also the hold harmless, we should mention that, that that's another reason that we don't anticipate next year.
Yes, that's, that's true.
As you mentioned.
Good point.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Any other trustees with questions or comments? I see none. Thank you so much, Mrs. Moss.
Thank you.
Excellent presentation, as always.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now address the consent agenda items, which consist of routine items grouped together for approval as one item. Unless removed from the consent agenda, these items will be acted on at one time with no discussion. Trustees, are there any requests for items to be withdrawn? Seeing none, is there a motion to accept the agenda? Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Fowler. I move that we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion for Mr. Chapa and a second for Mr. Will Banks. We will now vote. Mrs. Mays?
Keisha Mays, I vote yes.
Erin Raish, I vote yes.
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Sarah McMorrow, I vote yes.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes. John Debs, I vote yes.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes. The motion carries.
We now move to discussion item B. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler. And this evening, we bring for discussion our AISD coaching model for our academic area. I think this has also been discussed over, over this past year, and we wanted to provide an update, some clarity, also some tweaks and changes, and just an understanding of what we do with our coaching strategy. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Wertz.
Good evening, President Fowler, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos, and welcome. Mr. Hibbs, nice to have you back with us and see you again. Tonight, Dr. Brown and I are here to share with you, as Dr. Cavassos shared, a little bit about our coaching strategy and how we're trying to align the strategy across our system to have maximum impact with kids. And I thought I would first just highlight a little bit about what coaching is and what it isn't. And coaching is really centered around this idea about getting better every day, which is in our leadership definition. It's this, this concept of really breaking through a mixed, a fixed mindset and, and really adopting more of a growth mindset. This idea that you're never really landed as a person. There's always an opportunity to improve ourselves, and so coaching helps us do that. But there are some things that coaching is and that it isn't. So, for example, coaching is really more additive in nature. It's really designed to build on your strengths. It's not, it's not reductive or diminutive. It's not designed to really focus on all your weak areas and try to, like, make those better. It's really trying to maximize what you can already do well and how to, how to implement those things best in the classroom. It also promotes teacher agency in the learning process, rather than being directive in nature. So what we mean by that is, the coachee, the teacher actually being coached, has a really strong role in deciding what their goal is going to be around. It is not the coach's role to come tell the person what they're going to be working on. It's the coachee's role to elevate areas of their own personal growth that they want to work on. It's also goal-centered and not random. So when a coach is working with a coachee, they are working around a very specific goal that they've established, and they are also articulating what evidence will be used to decide whether that growth has actually occurred or not. It's not just random conversations about practice in the classroom. And it's also, as I mentioned, based on this evidence and not necessarily focused on subjectivity. So it's not just about a person coming in and making some judgments about what person is doing or not doing in the classroom. The teacher or the person being coached actually elevates evidence that shows how they're implementing their practice in the classroom. And finally, coaching is scheduled and intentional. It is not about pop-ins and being unexpected. So when we talk about coaching, if I was coaching any, a person, they would know exactly when I'm coming, how long I'm going to be there, what we're going to talk about. They would know the nature of the conversation. It's a scheduled time together. It's not a walkthrough where you just pop in and we evaluate your practice and give you feedback. That's a different type of thing, and we're going to talk about the difference between those two tonight. Arlington ISD has adopted a coaching cycle, which I'm going to talk to you about tonight. And just to give a place of reference, there is a continuum that's considered when you think about coaching. And it ranges from coaching, which is the way I just described, where you guide your client through their own reflective thinking to land on growth, all the way to the opposite end of the spectrum, which is what we call consulting, where it's much more, I teach you, or, or more directive in nature. And then there's this place in the middle, which is more of a 50-50 place, where there's this give-and-take, meaning you may know some things, I may know some things, you might seek my guidance, and there might be some teaching process that kind of happens there. But if you're talking about true coaching, it is on the spectrum where the driver of that discussion primarily is the coachee. So Arlington ISD adopted the AISD coaching and feedback cycle, and it consists of three main phases. The pre-conference phase, which is really around goal-setting and brainstorming and action steps, and I'm going to go into the details of what that is. The support and observation phase, and then finally, the post-conference phase, which leads into looking at evidence and re-establishing the next goal, and that cycle happens over and over again. In order to go through a cycle, you go through all of these stages, and they're aligned to the process of e-gro. And so I'm going to outline how that, how you work through those stages as you're being coached or being worked with as a coachee. So the first part of it is preparing for the session. One of the things that we know about coaching is that the relationship between the coach and the coachee is vital for growth. There has to be a place of trust. You really have to create a relationship where you can be transparent and vulnerable. So there's a portion of time at the beginning just about making connections with the person as you're working with them as a coach. And then the first step is the E-step, which is evidence and praise. So in, in this step, it's really about celebrating success. What are all the good things that you're already doing well, that you've been able to accomplish? And this phase, we call evidence and praise, is actually part of the cycle from the beginning. And every time we do a cycle, we start with that part. You always want to acknowledge the things that are actually going well in, in the implementation of this new practice. And the second step is the, the G and the R portion, which is really about identifying the goal and then really thinking about what your choices are going to be, what were you, what were, what's your current reality? So in, when you think about setting the goal, these are just some examples of questions that could be posed in a, in a coaching session. They're not the actual questions you have to give, they're just examples. But basically, if I was a coach working with a coachee, we would establish the goal, and we would really reflect on, well, compared to where I want to be, what's my current reality? Where, where is the gap actually exists, so that I can start to think about what my next steps could be? Which leads into the O, which is options. So how do I begin to plan for those options? Some questions that might be asked are, what are some ways that you can achieve this goal? Let's take a few minutes to think about how to plan out or focus on this specific area. There might be even opportunities where you can show them how to do some certain things if there's a request for that in the coaching session. But really, this whole piece of, of the, of the coaching cycle or this moment is really about generating ideas with the teacher for how they could go about accomplishing the goal that they've established. The next section is the W, which is the, what will I be doing? What will I do? And this is really about providing or offering a bite-sized action steps that a person could actually take towards their goal. What you want to do when you're coaching is you want to help people inch towards the outcome they're trying to get to. You're not going to make massive growth and change in a single swoop. So this is really about, now that we've thought about all the different ways that I could go about accomplishing my goal, what are the, what are the things I'm going to do between now and the next time we meet? And the very last step is identifying with your coach about what evidence you'll use to decide whether you actually arrive there or not. And then the cycle happens again and again. So that's the coaching cycle that happens over a period of time. What, there is, there's another thing that we do that Dr. Brown's going to talk about, which are really about observations with feedback, which is a little bit different than this, this coaching cycle that I talked about. So I'm going to turn some time over to her, and she'll share that. And then I'll be back to talk about how we're going to measure progress.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Dr. Brown?
Thank you. So we spent a little bit of time in the previous presentation talking about observations and feedback and the importance of that. And so we know that we are engaging in observations with our teachers and walkthroughs just to continue to create positive change in their performance and to help support them in their, in strengthening teaching and learning. So I just did a side-by-side here to show the difference between the structured coaching cycle that Dr. Wertz just shared and what a walkthrough with feedback looks like. And so in the coaching cycle, it is more structured. And in Arlington, we're focusing on literacy and math as relates to the four best practices, which Dr. Wertz will share in just a moment. You can see there's a pre-conference, the post-conference, there's the observation in between there. And then with the walkthrough and feedback session, those are informal. That could be as short as a 15-minute walkthrough around a focused area that has been identified, or it could be around the focus five, which we'll talk about in just a moment. It could be general, it could be evidence-based, it could be something the teacher has outlined as an area of opportunity or a growth goal for her, for herself, or for himself. And again, an opportunity just for the principal or the administrator and the teacher just to kind of see where they are in their practice and be able to provide feedback. The biggest structured coaching cycle, walkthrough, feedback, informal, but still coaching and giving feedback to that teacher. So who will engage in observation and feedback sessions? That could be all teachers. We already know that with our literacy and math teachers, our proposal is that they will engage in best practices our proposal is that they will engage in best practices coaching in the coaching cycle. We may have a science teacher, or a social studies teacher, or a PE teacher. We know it's important for everyone to still get better and to continue to improve their practice. We want to make sure that all of our teachers are engaged in observations and walkthroughs throughout the year. We are looking for at least a minimum of four. So that, again, could be informal, 15 minutes here, 20 minutes here, around a specific goal or a focused area. That, of course, will be throughout the next school year, and the point is to strengthen teaching and learning, of course, is why we're doing everything that we're doing in our district. And so around our Focus Five, you've heard me say that a couple of times already. So I want to just kind of walk you through briefly what our Arlington ISD Focus Five will be for 2223. The last couple of months, we've engaged in a cross-departmental, I guess, collaborative group to really kind of drill down and talk about what are our instructional priorities as a system and how we make sure that we are narrowing the focus, not adding more to what we've already been doing, but really going deeper in our understanding and knowledge of instructional priorities. And so this team of about 20 people have come together over the last two months to drill down, identify what those are. So our comprehensive literacy plan is one of the components. Again, this is not new. We've already had our literacy plan, but we're going deeper and making sure that we have a solid understanding and foundational understanding of what that looks like. Also, our comprehensive math plan. Again, it is not new, but it's important that we go deeper and make sure that we have, we're narrowing our focus on math strategies and that math block to ensure that instruction is happening the way we know it should be in those classrooms. Instructional interventions are very important. We know that good tier-one, good first instruction is what we all strive to deliver, our teachers, every single day. But we also know there are some students who need additional support. So with our HB4545 for students who did not meet the standard on STAR, I almost said toss. I think I just almost dated myself. HB4545 for students who did not pass STAR, and then also just other students who are struggling, who are maybe not even being a STAR-tested area, who need support. So through our MTSS, our multi-tiered support system for students who are struggling, that's also an area of focus for us. Our district assessments and screeners, ensuring that when we get that beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year screening data, that we're doing something with that data and being very targeted and specific in how we're supporting students who have shown some of those areas of opportunity to accelerate their learning. And PLC implementation. You've heard us talk a lot about PLCs over the last several years and our focus on ensuring that we have really solid structures for that professional learning time with teachers. That includes a focus on data-driven instructional practices. So that's an example of what a walkthrough could focus on. For example, if I'm a literacy teacher, I may have a walkthrough during my guided reading lesson, where the administrator comes in, walks, gives me feedback on how my guided reading lesson looked. And again, an area for you to continue to strengthen and support throughout the school year. Other ways that we'll focus on monitoring implementation, quality of the Focus Five, is again, through professional learning and coaching. Again, PLCs are very important to us, that we are identifying tools and resources that our teachers need in PLCs to deliver, to plan high-quality lessons for first good instruction. Making sure we're aligning our goals and efforts. We've gotten feedback in the past from teachers that they had so many goals for different people and different priorities. We'll make sure we streamline that to where they have one goal they're working on that makes sense for implementation for them and focus for their work for the year. And then monitoring our data and making adjustments as we need to. So these are just a few ways that we'll continue to support and monitor the implementation and quality of the Focus Five. We have talked to principals just a couple of weeks ago. I gave them an overall view of what this would look like. We'll go deeper during ILA in July, and then, of course, with our teachers when they return in August. So now, Dr. Wertz is going to come back and talk about the focus of the coaching cycles. I think I stole a little bit of his thunder a minute ago, but you got it from there.
There's no thunder. So I think the reason, one thing I wanted to mention in terms of the graphic that you saw Dr. Brown shared with the columns is the foundation is really based on best practice. And so our goal over the last three, or the next, this year and the next two years, is really about shoring up in math and reading. Teacher's implementation of four very specific research-based best practices that show or demonstrate growth in the classroom when they're done well. And so when we talk about the Focus Five, we think about literacy. It's not the entire literacy plan all at once. It's how do we do what we talked about earlier, which is create bite-sized chunks that people can master across the system and then build their capacity over the plan over time. So next year, for example, Dr. Brown mentioned guided reading as one of our focus areas. So the question would be, how do we coach and support teachers in reading the classroom in implementing these four best practices in the context of the focus areas of the literacy plan, which could be small group instruction in guided reading? So how do you apply small group instruction in the guided reading setting? What does small group instruction look like when you're doing mathematics? And really trying to help teachers think about how to apply them in those specific content areas. So we're going to continue next year and the year after around these four best practices, which are, as a reminder, standards alignment, assessment, informative feedback, small group instruction, differentiation, scaffolding. The walkthroughs and informal feedback will be provided by campus leadership around these Focus Five areas to help make sure the system is moving and that the support is there for teachers along the way. The cycles, the actual coaching, will be centered around their application of these four best practices in the reading and mathematics classroom. I think that's a really important distinction, is the intention around the cycles because of our belief that the foundation of academic success across all content areas is really based in mathematics and reading. Social studies and science are the application of those two things in a different content area, that we want to shore up kids' success in those two areas. And that's the reason why we're focusing all of our coaching cycles around those two content areas. So who will get the coaching, continue to get the coaching? It'll be literacy and math teachers. It'll be aligned, as I mentioned, to the best practice, and they will engage in four coaching cycles over the course of the year. So in essence, the very first meeting that they would ever have with their coachee will really be about relationships, goal-setting, and then the process will start over the course of the year, where they will set their goal, they'll have an observation from their coach. Their coach will provide some feedback, and then they'll have a post-conference, and that cycle will go four times over the course of the year. Just to give you a sense of amount of time, a typical coaching conversation lasts about 45 minutes. So they'll engage in four of those over the course of the year. Who's providing the coaching? Well, it'll be a combination of a relationship between Engage to Learn coaches and Arlington ISD coaches. So one of our strategies, if you remember way back, when we started with Engage over a long time, I always said, we're filing for divorce when we get married, which basically means we have no intention on, they're not supplanting our efforts. They're there to support us to build capacity and then to leave while we fly on our own. And so we are in that process now of starting to shift and meld, I guess, mend those two parts together, where you have academic services, working with Engage to bring Engage coaches to support campuses in, and then campus-based instructional coaches actually doing lifting of their own caseloads of coaching to the point where eventually you get to the place where Arlington is doing their coaching and Engage no longer is doing coaching in the system. So the question is, if you're investing all this time and effort, how do you monitor the quality of the implementation? So one of the things you, we've heard us mention over the years is there is a relationship between inputs and outputs. So we have to measure two things. One, what's the quality of implementation of the actual strategy? Is it actually occurring as designed? And if it is, what impact is that having on the outcome you're looking for? And the reason that's important, I kind of use the analogy of going to the doctor when I talk about this concept a lot. It's if your doctor prescribes you medication, but you only take it once in a while, and you go back to the office, and she asks you, she looks at your numbers, and she's like, it doesn't look like you're getting any better. The fact that you're being haphazard about your medication is probably a reason why your numbers aren't going up and down. But if you're consistent in applying the prescription as designed, then there's reliability about, okay, well, it's either working or not working. We can make adjustments. So our goal as a system is first to figure out how to measure that it's actually being implemented as designed, so that we can see if it's actually impacting kids. So there is a platform that we'll be using, and we have in place this year called e-Suite. And there's a dashboard that will allow us to look at many things. It'll allow us to look at the number of coaching sessions that are happening, who's doing the coaching, which of coaching appointments are being kept, and which ones are being not kept, and the reasons why. We'll be able to figure out and see what kind of touchpoints are actually occurring in the coaching conversations. We'll also be able to see where teachers are landing in the e-Gro process. So when I think about that coaching cycle, and I mentioned that we start with E and then we work through G, the whole e-Gro process, we'll be able to know at any given point in time on the dashboard where the coachees are, what percentage of coachees across the system are at which part of that process, and be able to drill down, all the way down from the district to the campus to the actual teacher themselves. We'll be able to know how coachees are growing, specifically under certain coaches, meaning if a coach is working with a caseload of teachers, we'll be able to see, are they actually earning their growth indicators through their coaching conversation? Is it translating into badges? And do those badges actually result in improvement in student outcomes? We'll be able to see which badges are actually, teachers are growing in, and which ones they're not growing in. We'll also be able to look back and actually take the data that we have and start to see, is there a relationship between badges earned and outcomes for students? So what we'll be able to do is, when we do our screener data, or we get our STAR scores, we can put those into the system, and we can start to marry the relationship between, how many badges a person's earned, level-three badges, which are proficient, and the relationship between that and the outcomes kids are having in their classroom. It's, that kind of relationship is the starter of digging in deeper to what's actually occurring in the classroom, and how do you make it better or stronger? If there isn't a relationship, why is that happening? And it allows us to actually start to see, is the strategy impacting the actual outcomes that we're looking for? And then lastly, we're in the business of hiring and keeping teachers. It's really difficult right now to find teachers and to keep them. So we will be able to tell, does coaching actually impact the retention of teacher? What you see in front of you today is some initial data where we started marrying those two things over the last several years. What we found consistently is teachers who are coached typically stay in the system longer than teachers that don't. So the person who's actually responsible for the e-Gro model, what's actually called Grow, it's used by Google and other organizations, is Sir John Whitmore. And he says coaching is unlocking people's potential to maximize their own performance. And that's really what it's about. It's not about a person telling someone what to do. It's about helping a person be reflective, and they're thinking about their own practice so that they can find their own next steps with the guidance of someone who can help them think about those processes. So with that, we're here to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Dr. Wertz. I do have one question. Is coachee really a word, or can we give you credit for coining that?
No, it's actually a word.
Thank you.
No.
Ms. McMorrow?
Coachee makes me want to say, then what's the coach called? Just coach?
Coach.
Coacher? I don't know. Thank you, Dr. Wertz. And this is all very exciting. I obviously believe in the power of coaching and how it really makes a difference in not just teachers, but the students that they serve. Otherwise, I wouldn't be a coach myself. And it was good coaches and instructional specialists that inspired me to pursue this. And it's research-based. I'm really glad that we had this presentation because it clarified a lot of questions that I had, you know, going into next year. What will this look like, you know? Can we go back to one of the very first slides where it has that T-chart, what coaching is and is not? Sorry, that was like the very first slide. So this makes a lot of sense to me, and if I understand this correctly, the direction that we're headed, another thing we could say coaching is not evaluative. Is that correct?
That is correct. In fact, I think that's a really important point. I'm glad you mentioned it, so thank you. There isn't, there shouldn't be. In a true coaching relationship, there isn't an evaluative relationship, which offers an opportunity to be completely vulnerable because there's no stakes there. The reason why it's a little messy sometimes in education is because typically, your coach happens to also be your appraiser, unless you have a system that has invested in coaches who stand alone as a role of coach, and they don't appraise at all, which Arlington luckily has that in place. So ideally, yes, whether it's an Arlington ISD instructional coach or it's an Engage coach, there's no evaluative process in there at all. It's all reflective.
Great. Great. I figured that would be your answer, but I just wanted to double-check. And, you know, you and I have talked about this, how good coaching, it is reflective. It's essentially, good coaching is holding up a mirror. And, you know, I love that you specified that it's the coachee initially that drives the goals. And that made me think of the question. Speaking of those goals, do the goals have to come from a rubric from e-Suite, or can the coachee develop his or her own goals, even if it doesn't match something that's in a rubric?
So that's a good question. When it comes to coaching, we're coaching specifically around the four best practices. So the goal should be related to growth indicators that are connected to their implementation of the four best practices. The one thing that I think is important, that I want to highlight connected to what Dr. Brown talked about, is all of the rubrics or all of the best practices have been mapped back to the T-test dimensions. So if a teacher happens to be in the appraisal cycle, and they're also getting coaching, they only need to set one goal, because that goal they're being coached on is also the same goal they can work on in T-test if their appraiser agrees to that. There's no reason to have multiple goals, which I think is something that sometimes is challenging, because if you're not intentionally trying to marry those two things, you might have a goal with your principal that's doing a T-test appraisal, and you have a goal with your coaching, and it gets to be overwhelming. That mapping has always existed. What we're trying to do is help people be really intentional about saying, hey, if I'm working with a teacher who happens to be appraised this year, can I not collaborate with that teacher who actually should be setting their goals in both settings with their person? But they're just setting the one goal, and they're getting supported around that one goal rather than trying to do multiple.
I think that's huge, because if everything's important, nothing's important.
That's right.
And so we're prioritizing our goals, and I, you know, I would hope that the coach and the coachee has the relationship too, to have those informal conversations that aren't related to the goal, but are related to professional growth.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure that's happening. One more question, and I'll turn it over to my colleagues. I know that we have our in-house Arlington ISD coaches, and we're also, we all also have our Engage to Learn coaches. Will all of our coaches be going into classrooms to see our teachers in action?
Yes.
Awesome. And that is all my questions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. McMorrow. Mr. Willbanks?
Thank you, President Fowler. And thank you. This was a good presentation, Dr. Wertz and Dr. Brown.
Right there.
So you said this was, the Grow model was based on research from Google, did you say?
No, I said Google is an organization that uses the Grow model.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know they've done a lot of research. Yeah, they've done a lot of research on what makes high-performing teams. And this type of cycle is kind of key to their culture now. And one of the things, looking at this, and I know from looking at, you know, our previous instructional models, that giving students agency in their education and setting their goals really upped engagement and then ultimately student outcomes. It was kind of the secret sauce, if you will, into some of the best instructional models. And the fact that you do the same thing with our teachers and allowing them to take agency of the coaching cycle by setting their own goals and working on what they feel they need for growth, I think, has to have the same effect and provides a much more collaborative environment. The other thing that you pointed out is, based on Ms. McMorrow's questions, is, and from, we know, all the research that Google did, is for this to happen, it has to be very safe. And people need to be vulnerable to, you know, talk about where they feel their weaknesses are and not be evaluative. And so I think, you know, together, the changes we made with T-tests and this is definitely the way to go. I was a little confused about, this has a heavy Engage to Learn feel to it, and I know we have our own coaches, but again, the plan is everyone's going to be working off of this template. Our existing coaches are not going to be doing anything different from E2L coaches. Is that correct?
Well, they're all, so our internal coaches have other responsibilities that they're engaged in on the campus besides coaching. Coaching is a significant portion of their role, but they also do other things like facilitate or help with PLCs and things like that. The Engage to Learn coaches, all they do is come in and do the coaching. That's the only thing we hire them to do. So in terms of the coaching process, yes, they'll engage in it in the exact same way. We have something in place called a Coaches Academy, where we train coaches on how to coach. Coaches actually are badged around coaching standards, around proficiency, the coaching standards, so that they can actually coach correctly. And so the kind of coaching and the model of coaching that Engage to Learn would do or our coaches would do is the same. It's this cycle that I just described. So regardless, if we were both colleagues in a school, and I happen to have an Engage to Learn coach, and you happen to have and I happen to have an Engage to Learn coach, and you happen to have the instructional uh coach at the campus, we should be going through the same process.
Good. Um, one of the questions I had is how we differentiate this for um seasoned professional teachers and maybe a, a teacher fresh out of college. But by setting our own goal and identifying those things, that pretty much takes care of that. I'm sure there's more ca- uh, uh, more frequent cadence to the coaching touchpoints. Uh, are there more observations for the younger teachers?
So in terms of the coaching cycles, it's the same, a number of coaching cycles that everyone will get, but the, the differentiation comes into what you described, which is my collaborative work with my coach around setting my goal. Um, because if I'm brand new, my skillset in certain areas of the rubric around small group instruction will look different. Whereas if you've been teaching now for 20 years, uh, you have, you're going to be thinking about it in a much different place. The other thing about it too is um, the pace at which, the rate at which people earn their growth indicators, which actually result in a badge, um, change, it, it varies depending on person to person. So very experienced teachers might actually earn growth indicators quickly because they can intuitively bring things into their practice much quicker, while as a brand-new teacher is still learning some of the basics. Um, so a lo- the differentiation is completely available to be there, but because the driver is the "coachee" through reflective questions that the coach is offering, that differentiation can be accelerated um by the person who's actually being coached.
Yeah, awesome. Um, and thank you, thank you, thank you for narrowing down our focus into just four key best practices. I think that's going to go a long way to, to be much more effective and allow each teacher uh to accelerate growth of our teachers and then affect student outcomes um, much more effectively. Um, so, and those look, you know, I'm no, you're the pedagogical expert, I'm not. And, but if I had to guess, these would be the four. So, um, I was a little confused at how they fit, fit in with the Fab Fi- or Focus Five.
Five.
Fab Five are different. Um, uh, but I think, you know, those are, those are focused on the literacy plan and the math plan. And, and so now, that makes a little more sense. And then my final question is, and this is my biggest concern, is at the end of the day, we as a board, we don't necessarily need to go um in into the weeds and look at your process measures and, and look at how many badges and the ones that you're going over, but what we do care about are outcomes. Um, and, but you talked about, how do we know if it's working? And you, it's heavily badge-focused, which we've been doing currently with E2L for quite some time. Uh, but I don't think we as a board have heard, what is the correlation between badges and outcomes? And do we see it? Is that the right measure, um, thing that we're measuring, knowing that that's going to affect outcomes? Um, do we have data available based on, I mean, uh, how many of our badges have been? Uh, now, I know we've been through a pandemic, and that's disrupted effective measurement, but, you know, where are we on, on really knowing for sure that those two are tightly correlated?
So we have, we started the process of marrying those two ques- that question together in the spring. Um, in full transparency, it got a little messy in the spring, simply because there was a lot of pausing and starting, and pausing and starting. And so what we did is we looked at what the achievement, based on our screener data, was on badging, and we focused all of our felt area of analysis really around the four that we said we were going to start working on. So like, how are people progressing? The problem was, is when we pulled the data initially, it was at the beginning of the, at the end of the first semester, right after like CA2, right at the beginning of the second semester. Um, and we couldn't, uh, because of some irregularities that we had with the benchmark, we didn't want to integrate those numbers into it. And so what we, we didn't have enough people that had moved along the process because our strategy was literally only like five months old. So we had some people that were, had earned grow, a bad, a, a level-one badge, which is two growth indicators, or some had learned the level-two. What we're really looking at is, when you earn a level-three badge, which is proficient, is there a relationship between that and outcomes? Prelimarily, we can see there's a positive trend line, but it's too pre- it's too early to say, hey, I would put my stake in the ground around our data on that. Next year, w- we should be able to tell you. And I think that's the, the question you're asking is the important one, which is, the data is agnostic to how we feel about the strategy. It should just articulate whether it's working or not. I think the task that we have to do is make sure that we implement it with fidelity. Um, the challenge that I mentioned earlier this year is because it was so much stopping and starting, um, it was really difficult to say, hey, this actually works or doesn't work, these specific four around these um measures that we're doing in reading and math, because we didn't implement it with fidelity, um, because there was a lot of stopping and starting. But next year, um, we don't anticipate that being the issue.
Well, here's my concern, and the fact is that we've put our, all, it sounds like we're putting all our eggs in one ba- basket and looking at one measure, badging, and hoping that it's correlated, when I think there's a number, you know, number of touchpoints, what type of, there are a number of other KPIs that we could look at that we can say, oh, well, yeah, we thought the badges were going to be tightly correlated, but this other KPI obviously is more tightly correlated with student outcomes.
They're all, the, that, the badging is only the beginning of the discussion. It's not the actual analysis that's in depth. So you're, you're, you're correct totally. So one of the questions we ask, we've already started that question, which is, how many touchpoints actually generates an outcome in kids? Um, the general rule over time is you'd need at least a minimum of five, usually up to seven. That's what we're trying to understand. That's a good example of one. Usually because the coaching cycle starts with relationship building, and you don't even start to feel momentum until you're around cycle three. Um, that's, so that's a good question that we're, we're going to dig into. I think the important thing to note a- about this is, when you're trying to mar- understand the relationship, and this is, this is intuitive just in social science, there are so many, whoops, there are so many things that impact an outcome with a person. Um, when, when we say we're measuring badges, it's the reason why we're picking badges is because there are things that have to lead up to you earning a badge. So those things have to have happened well for you to actually earn the badge. So for example, you would have have to have had your touchpoints. You would have had to show an evidence that you actually do this in your classroom. And so the question is, is if you do this in the classroom as it's designed, does it actually make a difference with kids? And if the answer is, we're not seeing it making a difference with kids, then the question is, is well, maybe that's the wrong prescription. And that's what we're trying to answer. Um, so to your comment, yes, it's not just about badging. Badging is like the umbrella. There are all sorts of questions you can ask. You named one exactly about touchpoints, right in the middle of it. Like, is, is there a relationship between the number of two, the number of cancellation point that people do? They don't actually engage in their coaching cycle, or who they're actually working with? And the effectiveness of their coach? Like, there are lots of questions you can ask. The, the initial point is, do you even see a relationship? And then, once we see or don't see, then, then all the other questions come behind, but I think you're absolutely right.
Yeah, no, hopefully, Dr. Lopez's department is all over this and looking at where those correlations are and aren't.
Right.
We can, you know, accurately measure this and know, you know, it, as a board, do we need to double down on this? Um, or is it work, i- is it just not working and, and, and move to something that is?
Right. One thing I will say that's important, I just want to highlight, is this is just one strategy. It's not all of our strategies.
Right.
When I think about, when we think about all the work we're doing, I want to just elevate the Focus Five that she's talked, that Dr. Brown talked about. Um, we're, we also have to measure the quality of implementation of the specific components of the literacy plan that we're actually trying to put in the classroom. So for example, guided reading is one of our non-negotiables next year. Well, I can still measure badging, and you could be earning a badge as a teacher. But if I'm earning a badge, but the evidence I'm using isn't directly related to evidence I'm using in guided reading, I'm using another section of the plan, doesn't mean I'm not, I, I'm proficient in guided reading. Does that make sense? So I, we have to, as a, as a staff, we've talked about the fact, which is why the walkthroughs are, are in combination of coaching cycles, is I have to, coaching cycles are just about best practice. The walkthroughs and feedback is for me to monitor the quality of implementation of these Focus Five areas, because I need to know, like, you're actually a really proficient guided reading teacher, and I can see evidence of this practice in your guided reading. Um, because you're right, just mastering these four things is not the end-all-be-all. There, if, there's a combination of multiple things that we think will actually impact kids. What we have to decipher is which ones work, which ones don't. How do you start certain ones? Do you make some adjustments? Um, I remember a question that I'll mention um real quickly. Ms. Mays asked it a long time ago. Have you ever had a strategy and made an adjustment? This is how you make the adjustment, right? You have to be able to look and say, is this making a difference? And if not, maybe it needs another cycle. Maybe four is not enough, or maybe four's too many. You actually only need three. That, I think, informs some of the decisions we can make in future years.
Yeah, yeah. Well, uh, thank you. I think just, you know, the shift in culture to providing a, a, a non-evaluative way to allow our professionals to grow um is, is important, and I appreciate the move.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Mrs. Mays, did you have anything to add?
Uh, thank you.
Dr. Wertz, I'm going to try and work in my new vocabulary word "coachee" in as many conversations tomorrow as I can. So thank you for my new vocabulary.
I mean, you're the English teacher, so you probably could tell me.
I'm working that into everything tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Dr. Wertz and Dr. Brown. We appreciate it very much. Now we come to our open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding non-agenda items?
Yes, ma'am, we have one registered speaker.
Mr. Weber? Welcome, Mr. Weber. The second open forum segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to address the trustees on any subject except personnel. This is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. You have two minutes to speak, and Mrs. Benjamin will notify you when your time is up. Go ahead, Mr. Benjamin.
Richard Weber, Arlington, Texas. I want to talk about communication. More specifically, the two-minute rule. The two-minute rule is extremely unfair. You're supposed to be able to, like in this presentation here, I have to not only define the pro- problem and get, also try to give my solution all within two minutes. Now, about a decade ago, I don't know the exact date, uh, Mr. Hogg was uh ribbing me a little bit because I started my presentation with my name and complete address. At the time, then-Mayor Cluck had limited people to two minutes speaking. At the time, the school board, I believe, was five minutes. So he was giving me a little bit of ribbing about that, and now here we are today, and the school board has two minutes. The last two city council meetings, they've had over 60 speakers. Each one's given over their, their three minutes, each one of them. Now, it's over 60 speakers on Gay Pride. I mean, that's, it takes a while, but hey, if the people want to come speak, give them their three minutes. This two minutes is ridiculous. I believe Mrs. Fowler has the control of setting it in pace to get this changed, and she inherited the two-minute policy. I understand that. But let's be fair to the people that come down here and speak. How are you supposed to present yourself in two minutes? It's not easy. I mean, I've had to adopt, and I, I can get it done sometimes, but the two-minute rule is not fair. Let's change that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. We are now ready for the superintendent's report. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and um, I'll try to be brief on this. Uh, as two weeks ago, we closed our event season, and you can see it on the monitor there, with our Wall of Fame. So thank you to our staff and all the people that were honored on our Wall of Fame. Uh, congratulations to them for their accomplishments, and we look forward to honoring them on our website as well. The day after our Wall of Fame, we started honoring our seniors with eight graduation ceremonies over two days. It's an exciting time for everyone, uh, myself, the board, uh, to take part in these events. And there are um six graduations, traditional graduations, and we had uh two at the CVPA, um, and those were exceptional. So all exceptional, thank you to our staff, our principals, counselors, everyone involved, starting in pre-K, I suppose, that makes it possible for our students to walk that stage. And uh, we don't, I don't think sometimes we, we just go through that, and we don't reflect on the awesome accomplishments of this school district. Uh, last time, I talked briefly about our four star students, uh, star with one A, um, who will be attending Ivy League colleges. In case you missed it, there's, there's the picture. We have them in our, uh, blog, and next month, you'll be able to see them in the cover of Arlington Today Magazine. So congratulations to them. Thank you to our communications team for uh sharing that with our entire community. And finally, last week, the board and I were able to attend Summer Leadership Institute in San Antonio, and we presented uh two sessions. Uh, we learned and we helped teach as well. Um, our sessions were uh well-attended and uh taken very, very seriously. I think we set a very serious tone, I suppose, uh, related to finance. But uh, if we could put that picture back up, um, these are, and, and Mr. Will Banks was there too, but I'm supposed, he was taking the picture, and Mr. Chapa. But um, so we didn't get one with everybody, but just to acknowledge, thank you, board, for leading the way in uh, in our state, uh, and sharing knowledge across the state, uh, but also learning and growing and developing, the same thing we expect of, of everyone in, in the organization. After all, we are a, a learning institution, right? And so thank you to the board for your continued commitment. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Do any school board trustees have anything to report? Mrs. Mays?
Thank you, President Fowler. Um, I had the opportunity to attend the one-day district leadership training for Avid, um, where I sat in class with uh Principal Stacy Humbles of Arlington High and Principal Juan Villarreal from Sam Houston High School. And we had the opportunity to engage in some great conversation of how Avid can ensure that students are successful with college and career, which is part of our strategic plan, um, and be ready, um, and really help to close some of those educational gaps for some of our first-generation students. And that was very exciting, and I learned a lot. And um, I will allow the teachers, the principals, to continue to be principals. They work really hard, and I had a chance to see that. Um, also, um, yesterday or Monday was the opportunity to celebrate our American holiday of Juneteenth. Um, unfortunately, um, I have not been well, so I did not get an opportunity to physically go out and enjoy a lot of the festivities, but what I did get to do was see a lot of streaming, see celebrations on television, um, see comments, things that people were celebrating on Facebook. And I think the joy that I got out of being able to do that was just to see all of the different people, different nationalities, people from different states that were celebrating um Juneteenth. And I think since we are in a world of education, um, that history is pivotal to understanding some of the things that have happened in history that we do not want to happen again, and the reasons why, um, in addition to knowing the things that have actually thwarted America forward by all of the people, um, that make up all the different pieces of the fabric of America, our red, white, and blue. And um, I will end with my quote from President Obama, who said, "Juneteenth has never been a celebration of victory or an acceptance of the way that things are, but it's a celebration of progress." It's an affirmation that despite the most painful parts of our history, change is possible. And those changes may be incremental, but change is change. So I was just very excited to see the embrace of um America celebrate.
Thank you, Mrs. Mays. Madam Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
We do not.
Thank you, Mrs. McMorrow. We will adjourn at nine thirty, and meeting is adjourned.